Twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. And we will start our meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. Led by Mr. Knudsen.
Would you please stand and follow me?
Our pledge of allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the God of our world, for which we stand, one nation, united in this world.
Thank you. Okay, we have ten items on our agenda tonight. So just a review of what our Planning Commission bylaws say to help us with this meeting going smoothly. We will not start discussing a new item after nine P M. So we'll finish up whatever item we're on at nine P M. And then the meeting will, everything else will be continued to the next meeting. We would ask that each applicant, when it's your turn to speak, that you present whatever you're going to present in fifteen minutes. So each item, you'll get fifteen minutes. And then if there's any comments that you need to make to answer things, of course, you'll be given another opportunity to speak afterwards. And then if there's any members of the public or neighborhood representatives that are going to speak, just so you can kind of plan ahead, that we will give each neighborhood district leadership person three minutes to represent an item. And then each member of the community who would just like to make public comment will be given two minutes. So if that helps you to plan ahead. We will be making recommendations to the municipal council on any of the items on the agenda that have an asterisk next to them. And the ones that do not have an asterisk next to them will be decisions that we will be making tonight. That will be final decisions. We will start off with a roll call. We will start with Mr. Whitlock. Tell us your name, commissioners, and whether you have any conflicts of interest on the agenda tonight.
Jeff Whitlock, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
Okay, we'll go straight into our meeting. We'll start with item number one. Provo Development Services requests a conditional use permit revocation of P L C U P two zero one nine zero three zero nine for a dance hall in the general commercial zone located at seventeen hundred North State Street in the Cardville neighborhood. And Mr. Ardmore will present this to us.
Okay, so this item, as you noted in the the language was continued from the last hearing when we didn't have the proper staff to address it. We do at this meeting. So to give you a little bit of background on this, this conditional use permit, that that number you read in the beginning was from the two thousand nineteen conditional use permit given to Enigma. If you review their staff report, that was under previously in two thousand eighteen was under a different location on five ninety-one South one hundred West, near the transit station. So they applied for, when they moved to seventeen hundred North State, they applied for a new C U P in two thousand nineteen, as you stated. And that was approved in December of two thousand nineteen. Using that conditional use permit, there have been two business licenses approved for this address, units one through four there, as you can see on the map. One for Enigma events and one for Afoago Friday Dance Hall. So the background on why we're here today is, for the past several months, a staff committee comprised of the property ombudsman, Provo Police, Provo Fire, Customer Service, Development Services, have been meeting on different concerns that are had around the city. And one of them has been with this, this property, this, this use specifically. If you look on page three of your staff report, it lists what is on the screen in front of you. So Officer Lewis helped bring this information forward. The department has shifted now. We have Officer Grow here tonight to address a lot of the background here, a lot of the police calls that you see in front of you. But in kind of in summary of all of these things, in section fourteen oh two oh seven oh, it talks about the rights the city has or any applicant has to request a revocation of a conditional use permit. In this case, staff feels that a revocation is warranted due to the police calls that have been noted in your staff report and that are on the screen, and also unreasonably interfering with lawful use of stranding property. Staff met out in the hallway on March twenty-second with the applicant, with the business owners, talked about possible resolutions before this hearing. They might have an update for you. I have not received any written updates on, on possible resolutions. I believe that's all I have as far as my planning review of this. We're, we're supporting the, the call for a revocation. But Officer Grow is here and can expand, expound on, on the history and the city services that have been required for this use, if you allow him a few minutes.
Good evening, I'm Sergeant Grow. I'm the supervisor over the community oriented policing unit. And our unit is responsible for cases such as these in which we've, we discover a business or a residence or a certain issue is arising in the community. And it captures our attention and then we start working on how we can solve those issues. This particular dance, dance hall, if you will, was brought to our attention by patrol. And when I say by the patrol officers, I mean the officers, when you call the police for service, those are the officers that respond to the call and handle the call for service. So the patrol officer is brought to our attention that, hey, it seems that the Enigma Event Center is really ramping up an activity. We're there all the time, we're getting all kinds of calls for service there. When we do go out and deal with people there, oftentimes they're drunk, they're disorderly, they talk back, they want to fight, they want to cause issues and problems and whatnot. And so it kind of garnered our attention there and we started working on it. As you can see here before you, these are the types of calls that are the more significant ones that, that are regularly occurring there. Since this particular slide was, was presented and put together, a few more months have passed and there have been four more pretty significant calls, not, you know, nothing earth shaking. But we had a, on the eleventh of February, a vehicle full of underage drinkers with open containers of alcohol and Budweiser in the parking lot. February twenty-fifth, a concerned parent called to report that there's underage drinking and drug use going on at the Enigma regularly and that she knows this because her stepson partakes in it. On March nineteenth, we got a report of a vehicle theft from the Enigma. A patron there had her wallet and car keys stolen from the event center and then had her car stolen from the parking lot. And then we've had just noise complaints, which you can take that with a grain of salt because they do have a, a permit to be able to play loud music. But it has generated some concern amongst the neighborhood up there as far as how loud it is and how disturbing it can be. So that's basically all I have to share on this. Do you have any questions for me in regards to this?
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, I have a couple. If you could give us a little insight, like what, what types of behaviors or actions constitute some of these, these lists of defenses, like disorderly contact, suspicious activity?
Sure. Yeah, I can understand.
Some of them are really clear and some of them aren't.
Sure, and I get that and I, I understand how that can be a little bit vague. So disorderly conduct is generally going to involve some kind of fight or assault, but not always because disorderly conduct could just be somebody who's extremely uncooperative, yelling, shouting, throwing a temper tantrum type of thing. So all of those are kind of generalized as a disorderly conduct call. Suspicious activity, you can also, you know, you put that under umbrella of all kinds of different, I guess, you know, suspicious behaviors, whether that's could be somebody just hanging out in the parking lot that seems like they're not patronizing the business. They're just there and don't seem to really have a purpose for being there. It could be that they're, you know, walking around, talking to themselves. I mean, suspicious activity fits into all kinds of different things. So yeah, it's kind of hard to really specify what that means. But, and I understand your question, but I don't know how to really break it down to exactly. I, you know, I'd have to go back and look up the case numbers for those suspicious activity calls and give you specifics on it.
Yeah, I don't expect you to give it like, this is a general thing. And then probably the last one, the criminal mischief.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, great, great question.
What one that kind of is?
Yeah, so criminal mischief either involves, so it's the damaging of property. It's the intentional damaging of property. And oftentimes, what's been going on around there, around the building and whatnot, is uptick in graffiti. So I couldn't really, I'm not a gang expert or a graffiti expert. So I couldn't tell you that it was definitely gang related. But, you know, from, from to a layperson, it looks like it's gang related type graffiti that's being spray painted on the building. The building's kind of a big L-shaped place and it's usually on the backside of the building is where we're finding a lot of extra graffiti. So.
I have a question. Are you done, Mr. Gonzalez?
A follow-up question. Or are the ones, the ones listed up on the screen, are these ones that have occurred during their, their hours of operation rather than? Because at all other times of the day, like honestly, I shop in that area.
Yeah.
And I didn't even know there was a dance club there. But, but that's because I, when I go there, I, I know like Rancho Markets closes at eight.
Sure.
And some of the restaurants closes at nine.
Sure, yes.
So which ones are related to Enigma versus other, other type of businesses?
I, I understand. So as far as the graffiti is concerned, we couldn't definitively say, hey, that's a direct correlation to the dance center. We can't, that wouldn't be fair to say that. I think it is reasonable to maybe make a, you know, to, to draw that conclusion, but it's not fair to definitively say that. As far as these other ones, these are all directly tied to the dance club. And that's why we included them in this report.
Okay, my question was, I'm trying to decide how much of this is based on, is because of the location and how much of it is because of the use. And maybe that doesn't really pertain to our argument. But when this use was on six hundred South, was there a similar number of police calls?
And? Yes.
So it, it isn't just because it's in a more accessible location where there's people around that will complain?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Ardmore or for Officer Grow? Sergeant Grow?
Maybe, maybe one question.
Mr. South.
Have there been any actions to try to stem that? I mean, that sort of like, just like Commissioner Lisa's talking about, like, are there actions that have been attempted to minimize that from the, you know, from the property owner and the dance hall operator? That, that can be reasonably done or have been tried either at the previous location or the current?
So the, the previous location, I know that there was some dealings and such. I wasn't involved in those, so I don't know what all was tried or attempted back then. But I do know that it was, my understanding anyway, I guess I shouldn't say I know. But my understanding is it was the same ownership back then as it is now. I could be wrong, so don't quote me on that, but that's my understanding. And so I guess I'm just assuming that the owners already know the drill, so to speak, or know, you know, that this has been going on a long time between both locations. And then as far as what the, you know, the police have tried to do on our side is just extra patrol it. So all of our patrol officers know that especially on weekend evenings, they're driving through the parking lots, they're getting out and walking the parking lots, they're checking, you know, on suspicious vehicles and whatnot. That's how the carload of underage drinkers was located. Is the officer got out on foot and was walking around and found him just sitting in the car with a bunch of beer cans open and drinking. And they had littered, left a bunch of litter in the parking lot. That's another complaint we're getting from the neighboring businesses is that after these events, there's a lot of litter, you know, beer bottles and different things left in the parking lot. And that's really frustrating to them as well.
Any other questions for Sergeant Grow?
I have a similar question and it's a bit sensitive, so I'm not exactly sure how to word it. So we'll try our best here. What is like, related, like what is your theory of the case here for the problem? If it's not location and it's, and it's, and it's sort of been a thing with this, with this event? Like, is it, is the, or is the ownership not taking the right measures to manage the guests or the facility? Or just curious if you can speak to that or what you feel comfortable sharing?
I mean, that's, that's, and that is a sensitive question. But I, that's how I feel personally about it, is that there could be more done in terms of maybe security, you know, management of the guests and patrolling their own parking lot, patrolling their own patrons, making sure that they're not engaging in that. And if they are, to get them out of there or call the police, which, you know, they did engage in that. And at the Eclipse, when it was the Eclipse off six hundred South, they did start doing that. And that, you know, I feel like that kind of helped. But we, to my knowledge, that hasn't happened at this other location. So I feel like, yeah, there could be more done.
I'm looking at the requirements are given conditionally. And it says that no alcohol be allowed on the premises. Are these alcohol calls out in the parking lot or is it happening inside?
Yeah, to my knowledge, it sounds like these are all out in the parking lot and there are patrons that are frequenting the dance club, the dance hall.
They just are coming out to abide by the rules and causing problems elsewhere. Okay.
Yeah.
I, one, one thing I'm kind of curious about is comparable conduct at other similar locations, other dance halls, music venues. Or do we experience?
That's a good question. I, I have a little bit of numbers on that. And I can share a little bit with you in comparison. And, you know, they're not, again, not, not ground shaking, but some of it is a little bit eye opening.
I mean, because to me, like, like, like in popular culture, it's, it's not uncommon for a lot of the drinking to occur outside of the club where
Sure.
drinks are cheaper and
Sure.
and inside. And this, this, this isn't even the case really here because I, they don't, I don't believe they have an alcohol license.
Right.
But, um, so I'm trying to gauge like what?
I, I have, I have ABG's is here in town on Center Street. I don't know if you all are familiar. That's a, you know, a bar here. And in two thousand twenty-one, ABG's had seven calls for service and the Enigma had thirty-six. In two thousand twenty-two, it was a lot closer. ABG's had nineteen calls for service and the Enigma had twenty-three. And then so far this year, as far as this is up to date, this only runs through January. It's kind of an older report. But ABG's was, had three calls for service and the Enigma was up to six. If you added these other four calls that I mentioned, they'd be up to ten. But I don't know what, what ABG's would be up to, to date. So there's a bit of a comparison of something close or similar that we could think of. But yeah, two thousand twenty-one was a big disparity though, seven to thirty-six.
Like, how about like a big apartment complexes with college students? Because a lot of, sometimes there's, I don't know, underground parties or block parties or neighborhood parties. I'm, I'm wondering what, if you get similar, you know, I don't know, like in the summer, the Riviera or the Glenwood used to have these giant parties and stuff.
And I'd be untruthful if I said that that didn't occur from time to time. And that definitely happens. We do find, you know, alcohol parties and such amongst the college students. But it is not with regularity, regularity like this. And it's not consistently weekend in, weekend out, like clockwork, you know? So.
Are these just police calls on this list? Or are these things that officers on patrol have stumbled across? Are they included in the numbers?
They're included in the numbers, yes. Yeah.
Any other questions, commissioners? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Don't leave.
Don't leave? I'm not free to go?
Nope. Not till you've heard six votes. Mr. Ardmore, I have a question. First is, if, if you can maybe outline for us what our purview is here. We could talk all night about morality or, or location or the, the nature of this use. But could you please describe to us what the Planning Commission's responsibility is in the revocation of a conditional use permit? And what we, what findings we would need to, to show in order to move that direction?
Yeah, yeah, I can respond to that. It might be most appropriate to just kind of read from the, the code section that gives the Plan Commission this power. And fourteen oh two oh seven oh, it states the Plan Commission on its own motion or upon a staff recommendation or after receipt of an applicant's request, may hold a hearing upon the question of modification or revocation of a conditional use permit granted under or pursuant to the provisions of this section. So those, those provisions are these. That the use was, that the use permit was obtained by misrepresentation or fraud. Steph doesn't believe that is the case. That the use for which the permit was granted is not being exercised. Again, that Steph doesn't believe that's the case. But the use for which the, wow, for, that the use for which the use permit was granted has ceased or has been suspended for six months. Again, it doesn't apply to this conditional use permit. The next, the next three are the ones that Steph noted that we believe enacted this, this order for the Plan Commission to rule on. That the conditions imposed upon said use permit have not been complied with. We believe that because it's been interfering with adjacent properties and persons, that that one does apply. The next one is that the use is detrimental to the health, safety or general welfare of persons residing in the vicinity or injurious to the property in the vicinity. Except that a change in the market value or real station will be considered an injury. So we've, we've kind of expressed that through the police calls, through the police reporting, that that has been met. And then the last is that the conditional use has been materially altered or expanded beyond the scope of the use originally authorized. Factors such as, but not limited to, increased number of size of structures, finding that a nuisance exists or alteration of the approved project plan may, may be a cause for revocation. This one is hit on a little bit when you think about expanding beyond the scope. So the scope of the, the permit is for inside that building and how it's seemed to have spilled over into the parking lot and adjacent properties. We believe that that has also been met for the Plan Commission. So the Plan Commission can, can vote to deny the request of revocation, let these continue. Staff is recommending approving the revocation of the conditional use permit. And of course, you can always continue it to gather more information.
I noticed in your wording that you said in fourteen point oh two point oh seven oh that the Planning Commission can modify or revoke.
Correct.
So would, if we determine that modification is in order, what would that look like? Or what would be the justification for that?
So again, you would, you'd state your findings for the, the modification and then state what conditions, additional conditions or changed conditions should apply to this permit to mitigate the concerns.
Okay.
And maybe this is a question for, is, are those conditions, are they, one or more must be met? And is, is the operative word may?
I guess to say you have to conclude that at least one of the five.
Is it now?
There's a little gray button on the knob. There you go.
How about this?
Yeah, there you go.
I would say, yes, you do need to, would need to find that one of the five was violated in some way. And, and you know, you're the finders of fact here, especially number E, you know, detrimental to the health, safety and general welfare of persons. That sounds pretty broad and of course, you know, it is, but it's up to you to determine if that's happened. And also, but yes, it does say may, so you do have a discretion involved here.
Thank you. Okay, do, since you guys are the applicant, do we have an applicant speak? Should we have the property owner speak or should I just open it up for public comment? Advise me on procedure.
Uh, yeah, strictly by the bylaws, I would say we are the applicant.
Okay.
But I think it'd be appropriate to, to ask the business owners to, to come up first.
First, okay. Business owners. Would you come forward and tell us your name? And share with us whatever information you would like to share. Specifically what Mr. Ardmore talked about, if there were any things that had come up since March twenty-second.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Jensen. When you asked for the business owners, you'll notice a lot of people stood up. And Mr. Auburn, Aaron, sorry about the last name. He presented at the beginning, there are multiple businesses involved here. So I want that to be clear. First, a conditional use permit was granted to Enigma Events. And then subsequently, there's a Fuego Friday, which is another business that leases on specific days, which is Friday nights. They have control of this space. So here with us, we have Susanna and Alfredo. They are the business owners of Enigma Events. They are the ones that have the event center. These events include weddings, quinceañeras, baptisms, family events, which occur in this location. And then Luis.
Luis, uh, he is the business owner of a Fuego Friday, which does dancing and more of the dance hall side of the, the business, um, at that location. So, um, I appreciate everyone's involvement in this. Um, it came to these business owners as a surprise. Uh, they weren't notified, uh, Susanna and Alfredo, um, because they don't own the real estate. Uh, I think a notice was given to the real estate owner, but we're happy to be able to come before you and talk about solutions because this is their livelihood. This is what they, uh, live on, support their family on, and it's been a, a good business for them. And they don't want that, uh, to be jeopardized or, or taken. They understand that there have been issues, uh, here on, on the premises. Um, they're willing to work through these and talk about potential solutions. Um, a lot of these events we walked through with Aaron, we, we looked at these dates. A lot of them occur on Fridays and Saturdays, uh, which can be Saturday morning. If it's one AM or twelve thirty AM, that would fall on the Saturday. Um, so, uh, we believe a lot of the misconduct or the, the issues are occurring from this, uh, isolated event that occurs on Friday nights. And we can have Luis speak to that. Um, they have put measures in place to prevent these things from spilling out with security at the door. So alcohol doesn't leave the premises. Uh, I know there's other locations and areas that alcohol can be purchased nearby. I don't know i- it, where those are coming from, but I think something to be considered. Um, I also, um, believe that i- i- if changes need to be made in the licensing, uh, we're willing to do that and, and talk about that freely. Um, because w- we, we want to be good neighbors, good citizens. Um, this was a conditional use that was passed unanimously when they were relocated for the redevelopment of the South Provo area. So I believe, um, historically, if we, if we go back and look at those citations or the, the calls that were referenced before and saying this has always been a problem. I, I believe the city was aware with the, the business and the events, um, and for that to have been passed, to be given a conditional use permit, I think should be taken into account or consideration. Um, because the, the, because of the city's approval of a conditional use, other implications come into effect. These individuals have signed a fifteen-year lease on this space. Um, the property owner is here as well. It's, uh, if we talk about damages to the real estate, uh, we can ask them their opinion. Uh, you know, how this has affected the real estate and the business, but, uh, to, to now revoke a permit would have serious economic implications, both on these business owners and on that real estate being vacated, um, not having revenue and, and lease revenue that way. But I don't know if you guys have questions. I know there's a lot to be addressed and I'd like to give Luis some time as well to, uh, talk about the Friday night events.
Why don't we have Luis speak first and then we'll ask all of our questions after everyone has presented?
Can you tell us in what capacity you, or you represent, um, the, the owners?
Yeah. So I was involved. I'm a real estate agent. I was involved in the relocation of them. Uh, I'm also helping more on behalf of translating. Uh, Spanish is their primary language. And, uh, I'm, uh, I love to translate any of the, the comments and emotions that, uh, are felt by the business owners. So, that's my real role. I, I have no benefit gain or jeopardy of this other than relationships.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, yeah. So my name is Luis Castro. I own a Fuego Fridays. Um, just to give you a quick little history. Um, almost nine years ago, I started a Fuego Fridays with the concept of having a non-smoking alcoholic dance, weekly dance for the community that didn't want to go to twenty-one and over and be exposed to alcohol or any of that stuff. And so that's the reason why I started that. Um, now, um, I've always respected, uh, always, and I always will respect, uh, rules, regulations, the police department. I have a lot of roots in that. And so me, um, uh, coming to this, uh, there's a few reasons why um, I'm a little concerned about it. First of all, there was no communication. I, I found out about this, uh, meeting the day before the meeting through somebody that was going to be coming to, to speak. And that's how I was able to find out about it. And I came in last, the last meeting last month and then they moved it to this date. So that was one. So there's been definitely, uh, some poor communication in that aspect. Uh, when I registered my business with Provo, I included my email, my phone number, my address where they can mail things to me so that I, I'm, I'm able to know what's going on. Now, um, my, uh, my question, uh, here is, and it's always been, if you see all the incidents that have happened, they've all happened outside of the venue. We have no incidents happening inside the venue. Um, I have a security, uh, company, well, a, a security team of four security guards that do a great job at making sure that there is no weapons, no alcohol, none of that stuff going inside the space. And to, to try to maintain a safe environment. Uh, it all happens in the parking lot or outside. And that's why I probably am here to kind of, kind of clarify. Because I've gotten two mixed stories with the parking lot. Um, back in two thousand twenty-one, uh, with Sergeant, uh, Kinko, Kinko, I think is his name. Um, he came to us and directed us and let, let us know that the parking lot was a private, uh, area and that we were responsible for, for the parking lot. So the following week, we decided to block the parking lot and, and control who was kind of have access to it. And then we had a patrol car come and that's my, my bad that I didn't write down who, who it was that came to tell us that we couldn't block the parking lot because it was public access parking lot. So if we can, if, if, if we can police the parking lot the right way and search cars and do all that stuff, how can we, how can we control what, what happens in that? You never have to worry about inside the venue. There's no incidents inside the venue because we, we, we control that and we know what we need to do there. Um, and so that's, that's, uh, that's been something that I really like clarification on because, uh, uh, that's, that's the problem. Um, I, as soon as I found out this, uh, the following day after the, your meeting last month, I called, uh, uh, city policing to try to see if I could hire some off-duty police and pay for a patrol car to be at our parking lot every Friday. And I have emails. I should have, I should have sent them to you and it's my bad, but I, I printed them. Um, basically, um, trying to see if I could hire some police, some off-duty police to police the parking lot. Cause that's the problem, the, the, the parking lot. Um, and I haven't had any response. Probably they're really busy. Um, the, the thing, uh, and so I want to be able to find a solution and figure it out. I don't want this to die because the non-smoking alcoholic, alcoholic community, they need, they need somewhere to go. Um, if not, the, the only other options are the bars and the twenty-one plus clubs. And my, my dancers are tailored to eighteen, uh, plus, uh, for that rea- for that reason. Um, other than that, eh, basically I, um, let's see here, I, I wrote a few things. I'm sorry. My mind is going everywhere. I have so many things I wanted to say to you guys. Um, in the report that you guys have, if you see, there's about eight incidents that happen on Sunday, Wednesdays and Thursdays, which I don't, I don't do, I don't do business. Um, my, my business is just Fridays. Um, and then you're right, there's a lot of Saturdays and like the, uh, my landlords mentioned, if it lands between the hours of one thirty or two in the morning and back, i- it would land within my event. But I have no clarification on that aspect. If it happened within that period of time, or if it happened at three and, or four in the morning. Um, um, also another thing also is, um, for the last three months, um, and we've been really happy to have the police show up every Friday, uh, and they would come and patrol. And we would see them that some, sometimes they would pull somebody over and we were very supportive of that. We were very cooperative because uh, I never, I never sighed as it was, it was affecting my business. I thought, oh, wow. This is awesome. Uh, we, we have a great police department and they're there to help us and protect us. And so I sighed as that. So I didn't see it as a negative thing. I saw it as a positive thing. So then when I found out that they were, they were creating a case for me, against me, then it was shocking to me in that aspect. But in no, in no way I, uh, I, I, I could say that I have no problem making any modifications, hiring extra security if we need to do. Um, I've even, uh, I had suggested to buy a temporary, uh, portable, uh, fancy that we put through the event. Because I think, I think what we need is, I need to be able to have the ability to police the parking lot and we have not been able to. Um, there's been a few instances in that report that we actually called the police and we trespassed people. So they couldn't come into, inside of our space. But they still come to the parking lot and park in the parking lot and they just, because they know they can come into, to the parking lot, but they stay in the parking lot. And we, in, we can't get, let them out because it's a public parking lot. At least that's what I've been told too. So I'm confused in that aspect. If, if it's private, then I have, we have, I personally have every intention to do whatever it needs to do to police it better, hire more security if I need to. Currently I have four, actually brought my lead security with me. I have four security guards and I, I have no problem hiring more if it needed. But, um, as of right now, my, I felt like my hands were tied with it when it came to the parking lot.
Thank you.
I thank you.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any questions for any of these owners, business owners?
I, I'm assuming that business license and the, and the lease hold people that they're, um, I don't, do we have someone who actually owns the property here? I, I'm curious as far as like what, um, what lease obligations there are um, to the underlying property owner.
Okay, tell us your name and how you're affiliated with us.
Yes, of course. My name is Evan Rye. I represent the owners of the building. Um, we had reached, recently purchased the building a few months ago. And so we inherited the, the lease that they had with the previous owner. Um, so yeah, as far as the lease goes, um, I know there are some, some things in place to kind of help regulate that, like how late their events can go till. We put a cap on that. Like I said, I, I don't have that specific time right now. Um, but I do know there are some things in place of the lease to help with the, the events they have on Fridays and also with the other events they have throughout the week.
Do you have any restrictions in, in their leases on how or in what regard they can police events in, in the parking lot? Cause that's not,
Right.
I mean, the parking is yours. Um, the parking lot's yours and, and for the maintenance and, and repair and, and
Yes.
the activity on there. What, what, um, are the provisions that allow them to, to engage in further policing of the, the parking lot?
To my knowledge, like I said, we're, we're pretty new with the building. So I'd have to review the leases, see if there was anything originally put into that when the lease was originally written. Um, I do know that, um, like the parking lot is, I mean, I guess there's, is it public or is it private? It does, uh, is with the building, right? Um, and we, I guess with the things that, that was mentioned earlier about the things that are found on the premise, we have cleaners that come multiple times a week to clean up those things. Um, but as far as like with the tenants, I, I don't know if there's anything previously to when we took ownership of the building. Um, as far as like patrolling it, anything like that, I'd have to review the lease, but I, I don't believe there was, because that was not passed on to us with knowledge from the previous owners.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the business owners or the property owner? Yes.
May, may I ask, uh, with the property owner here, uh, I wanted to be clear, um, and I, I guess it's a question for him as well. But they are in support of Enigma events. So as a property owner, if it was a drastically negative thing, that would be a concern. But, uh, just for clarity, does the property ownership want Enigma events in this location?
Uh, yes, we do. It would greatly impact, um, my investors on the building. Um, as this business does bring in quite a bit of income for the building, because they occupy quite a bit of space in the building. Um, so we are in support of Enigma events. They are an event center. So they don't just host the Fuego Friday. They host weddings, baptisms, um, ma- um, quinceañeras, stuff like that. It's family oriented, but on Friday nights, for a short amount of time, they rent it out to the Fuego Friday. So, um, as a property owner investing or representing my investors, it's very important that they stay in this building as we're trying to improve the building, um, as far as facing it and making it better for the community.
Can, can you tell us what number unit this, this dance club's in, this event center is?
There's a suite one through four.
One through four? Okay. Gotcha.
Okay. I'm inclined to say, uh, we can let the property owners sit down. Don't go anywhere. We might have more questions for you. I have a clarifying question for Mr. Ardmore or maybe somebody in the, uh, somebody else at the city. But my question is, how does it work to have one conditional use permit and two, um, business licenses granted off of that one? Are there any weird things happening there?
No, that's, that's normal. Uh, the conditional use permit is for the use on the land and it runs with the land. So, uh, as long as each business owner is following those conditions, that business is a conditional permitted use for the property.
Okay. All right. I'm, um, I would love to hear, to open this up for public comment. So is there a representative from the neighborhood or the district that, um, includes Cardville neighborhood? Okay. Then are there any members of the public that have not already spoken that would like to speak? We can give each of you two minutes to share your thoughts or concerns or information that you think would be helpful. Okay. You can come to the podium. Please tell us your name and your address.
Uh, my name is John Sanchez and I know them, the owners, Susanna, for, uh, fifteen years. And I'm, I'm a photographer, professional photographer. So I'm in this venue and all the venues in, in Provo and solid city. And, and in this party's, uh, is family center. Like the, in whoever's at the door, they don't let anybody out of the parties with any alcohol, of course. So they have control of the parties. And it's family based because the party, the parents or the wedding or the couple, they're just enjoying their, their parties. So, and that's why they have the security. So I, of course I've been doing parties my whole life, been doing this since I was ten years old. Um, but I, I know, I wish you guys could see how they run it inside. So you see how, how well they're, they're trying their best.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak? Come on up and tell us your name and where you live.
Um, hi, my name is Dulce Navas. Um, and I'm actually, um, moved here as an international student and I live in Soul Lake. But, um, because of my beliefs and many things, you know, that I think I do the trip to Provo, because this is the only club I come to a Fuego Fridays. Not like every Friday, but regularly with friends. Because it's a place where we feel safe, you know, like where we can actually, like they have pretty good security system. They always like back us down, make sure we don't, um, have any alcohol or anything without us. Um, and I've never felt like threatened or anything. I actually, it's a place where, you know, we can have a good time, but in a healthy environment. Um, so I just wanted to say that like as a patron, um, is a place that I like to enjoy and I don't feel like, of course, everybody chooses to do what they want, right? And like you cannot control what other people do. But as business owners, I feel like they do a great job keeping everything, um, as it should. And I feel safe there. And that's everything I want to say.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Come on up to the podium. Tell us your name and where you live.
Um, so my name's Ezra Castro. I'm actually, uh, Luis Castro's son. Um, and I live currently in American Fork right now. Um, so ever since I was fifteen, I, I've been working with my dad in a Fuego, um, ever since I can remember. And, um, you know, just as the dul- You know, just as the Dulce, um, had come up to say. We always try to make sure, you know, that it feels safe for everybody. Um, you know, by doing pad downs, making sure there's no, um, arms coming in or alcohol or anything like that. Um, but you know, just as she said, it's, it's very hard to control, you know, what happens in, in a parking lot. And we try our best, you know, having our, uh, security go out and checking that everything is fine. And, um, you know, just, just as he said, um, you know. We really want to do whatever we need to do to, you know, make this work. Um, because this is, um, a livelihood that has helped and blessed my family. Uh, for many years, um, and it's something that I eventually want to take over and help my father with, so. Um, we just want to do whatever we can to, uh, to address the situation and make it better. So, yeah, that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Come on up. Tell us your name and where you live.
Hello, my name is Alexandra Miranda. Um, my husband and I live here in Provo. My husband is a DJ. He's the residential DJ for Luis Castro. And I think I would just like to say that I had never heard of a Fuego Fridays until I got married to my husband. And that was quite the experience, learning about this wonderful and great, uh, business opportunity that Luis. Has started and I would just simply like to say that again, it's blessed my life through my husband. Because Luis gave my husband the great opportunity when he immigrated here to be able to start here. I think the biggest thing that I've noticed is my husband goes and he works at other clubs, like up at Salt Lake and. Around the surrounding area and many of those clubs actually own the property, uh, for their parking lots. Now, this, this is like a mass building where like it's just, it's a lot of different buildings. And so the difference between what we have going on here is this decision of whether this is a private or a public parking lot. Because many of those clubs, they have substantial amount of huge security guards because they are twenty-one and over. But however, this is an eighteen and over facility and at those clubs, you know, there is drinking and all of that. But they do not go beyond their boundaries of their private property. So I think at this point, it's a matter, it's a matter of, because I have been there. Multiple times supporting my husband at these events and Luis and his team do do a very great job of patrolling what happens within. Within that building, but there is a maverick right there, right beside there that does obviously sell alcohol, like, you know, there is mischief that does happen. But everything that happens within the facility, he does take care of and he takes care of very well. And so I just wanted that to be known from an outsider's perspective, because my husband is a residential DJ there. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Come on up. I've never seen such a polite group of commenters. Thank you. Tell us your name and where you're from.
Uh, my name is Andres and I'm from Saratoga. Uh, so my, I'm a residential DJ as well, uh, for Lu- for Luis Castro, uh, at a Fuego Fridays. I've actually been a business partner of his and a lot of events for over fifteen years. And I've never seen this man ever put in anyone's life in danger, whether if it was his, his, his events. Or anything that he's involved in. Um, and just like how property, the property owner. And, uh, Enigma Event Center has expressed that, uh, Fuego Fridays influences financially, the wellbeing. On personal or business matters for everyone involved, for myself, all the way up to the investors. And so this man has blessed many of us with opportunities and as well as the financial support to. You know, to do what we love to do, which is to entertain people and to provide happiness and to be able. For people to de-stress in a very healthy way. Um, for, for one day a week for just a few hours. Um, it, it is a little bit of a, of a concern that a lot of these things happen when people are doing things in their car. Uh, but that is an extension of their own personal property and not ours. And so if there's anything that we can do, I mean, like, just like how Luis expressed. Uh, what we're here for is to, you know, work with you guys so that we can. Find a solution and to move forward and to avoid for anything piling up like this in the future. Uh, so that's just all I wanted to share.
Thank you. All right, any others? Okay, we will close the public comment portion of this hearing. And commissioners, we now have the opportunity to discuss or ask any clarifying questions. Any information that we need. I will just remind us that, um, what we're being asked to do tonight is to revoke a conditional use permit. And in order to do that, we need to find that it has not complied. With its original conditions or that it interferes with adjacent properties. Um, in a detrimental way or that, um. It has become a bigger scope than what it was originally approved for. So does anyone have comments or thoughts?
I, I have a couple of clarifying questions.
Okay.
Okay. Um, one I guess would be for Mr. Luis. Um, what, what time do the Friday night events get over usually?
One thirty in the morning.
Okay.
Can you repeat that so it gets on the mic?
One, one thirty in the morning.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the other clarifying question I had was, um, I think for the, the property owner. Uh, we heard a couple people, we heard, I think both Lu- Luis and the owners mentioned that. They were not notified of, of this, um, action by the city to revoke. Um, and, but that you potentially you were, were you notified? Could you speak to whether or not you notified them or anything along those lines?
Yeah, so we got, um, I guess a little paper in the mail. Um, and, but that was the only thing up just about the hearing. We weren't notified. Police showing up, um, or anything like that, that was on a recurring basis, because if that was, we would have. Talked with the business owners and found a solution of what we could do to help, um, control the parking and, and those who are in the parking lot causing. The, the issues. Um, I did pull up a parking agreement that I have that I'll read with you guys real quick. Um, the previous owner, GSC ProLC, the current owner of the Rancho Market Shopping Center. Hereby acknowledges the use of Enigma Events to be the events and dance hall such as use may require up to one hundred fifty-one parking stalls. Um, the city of Provo code. Uh, the GSC Provo LLC hereby acknowledges and permits the shared parking of the shopping center to be accessible. For the use of Enigma Events and the other tenants in the center. Um, so I guess that's, that's what I had. I didn't know previously that we also gave them the use of the parking stalls, one hundred fifty-one parking stalls. For the event. Um, yeah, but do you have any more questions?
Yeah, so, so just so I'm clear, you're saying, so you got, received some kind of written notice, but you didn't fully process the. Concept, why you received it or the consequences of it and did not make it, make it known to the, the, the business owners, correct?
Right, it kind of came out of nowhere because we didn't hear about police showing up on a regular basis. My office is in Salt Lake and so we, we have, um, our property managers come down. Usually during the day, we're not here, you know, twelve o'clock at night. And so we don't always see that. We have. Uh, the previous owner may have had cameras. We don't currently have cameras. Um, but that may be something we are wanting to do now that, now that we are hearing about this. Um, so that we can contact the owners. Um, depending at night, um, we're also, when we bought the property, the property wasn't very well lit. And so now we're working on getting all the electrical issues from the parking lights and all that also, um, fixed. I think will also help with the darkness in the parking lot that might be causing some of these issues. Um, so those are just some things I'm also thinking about. I, I also like their, I mean, if they're able to. Um, hire a police officer off duty to patrol the lot, um, I think that would also greatly affect us and help us in that way. But, but yeah, to answer your question, we did get a notice and we were surprised by it, so.
Any other questions, Mr. Whitlock? Ms. Kendall, do you have any questions for anyone?
I have a question for Mr. Ardmore. You said that you met with, uh, Luis and you talked about possible resolutions. Uh, things that the city sees are possible to try and come up with some resolutions. What were those? What, what were some of those?
So, yeah, Mr. Castro, uh, talked to me. Coming here for the, the previous hearing, not knowing that, uh, we were continuing it, because the officer, uh, wasn't present. Uh, we talked out in the, the corridor of City Hall and he expressed to me that he's going to try to hire. Um, some off-duty police officers to help the situation, to help regulate and, and secure the, the, the property. Um, he, he had called me, uh, indicating that he had been trying to contact them, but, um. I haven't had an update since that.
Were there any other ideas that you gave them? Any other ideas the city had?
No, I just told him, you know, the more, the more you can do to show that you're trying to resolve it before the April twelfth hearing, I think the, the better it would be for, for you.
Okay, and then was it the city that said you can't, uh, you can't control the parking lot? They couldn't put up barriers so that they can see who's coming in, coming out. Was it the city that said that to them?
I'm not sure. I, I, I'm not aware of that, that happening, so I don't know. Um, that might be with the police, I'm not sure.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, commissioners? Any other thoughts, comments? Mr. Whitlock, you waited till my head was turned.
I'm, I'm really sorry. I actually have a, a, an, a question. Or off, officer.
Grow.
Grow, please. I, I, if, if that's okay. Um, and thank you so much for, for, uh, all you do to serve our community. Um, I was curious if you could kind of actually dovetail on the question we just asked Mr. Ardmore. Like, uh, given your experience, things that business owners could do to help mitigate the issues that you have seen.
Yeah, I think some of that would be right on the right track. Um, the issue with the overtime thing, that's completely above my pay grade. That's not something I can approve or, uh, you know, um, if, uh. I mean, I, I completely believe Mr. Castro when he says he reaches, he reached out for overtime opportunities. Um, that all has to be routed through a specific person at the police department. Um, and, uh, so I don't know if he was directed in the proper, uh, to the proper, proper person at that point. Um, but there is a, a person who works for the police department that schedules all of that and it's run through an approval process to, you know. That determine whether or not, uh, it's even, you know, uh, uh, doable or, or whatever. Um, so yeah, but, uh, you know, better lighting, cameras, I mean, I think all that stuff would be wonderful. Uh, as for controlling the parking lot, I mean, that's, that's news to me as well, that an officer said you could or could not do that. I mean, I, you know, I think that would be up to the actual property owner to make that determination. I don't know that. With it being private property, unless the city has regulations or ordinances that govern that, you know, that would need to be looked at, but, uh. You know, if it's private property and the property owner is, you know, in, in my opinion, you know, without knowing all the, the city ordinances and whatnot that might. You know, override that, um, I don't see why they couldn't control who's coming and going. I mean, um, it's private property, but there is public access to it. And so, you know, people should be allowed to, you know, drive through there or visit there if they want. And I don't know that they can be subject to search just by virtue of driving into the parking lot, you know, that, they might run into some issues there. But I, I, I don't know, seems a little complicated, um, and something that the city might need to look at again with ordinances and whatnot. And see if that's something that's, um, that's doable. But a little difficult when a bunch of businesses share the same lot, so.
Thank you all, sir. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Okay, I'm going to jump out on a limb here and I'm going to say, I'm going to make a suggestion and you guys can veto it because it's just one person. But I feel like there's no neighborhood input, neither positive nor negative about this. So that to me says, maybe the neighborhood doesn't see this as a problem worthy of addressing. Um, the people that we've heard from have nothing but rave reviews. Granted, a lot of them have vested interest in the success of this venture. Um, we have a business, a property owner who's willing to work with these business owners to try and resolve a problem. And we have business owners that are also willing to try and resolve it. And I feel like. I agree with the history of police calls not necessarily corresponding with the, the venue that seems, it seems to be that the dance. The Friday night dance venue is the one that's. The most likely to be causing problems, but it doesn't seem to correspond time-wise. So I'm inclined to say, I would love to continue the request and have them try and address it. Before we hear it again, or maybe it gets dropped. I don't know if that's even a legal suggestion to make, but that's what I'm leaning towards. Cause I don't see this as somebody who is intentionally trying to go against their permit. I don't see it as people who are trying to make this bigger than what it is. I see it as people who are trying to do exactly what they said they were going to do and riffraff keeps showing up to make. Make problems despite their best efforts. So I feel like if they could improve their lighting, maybe put some cameras up, find some way to, to. Use the security options that they have in a more efficient way. Um, that maybe this problem can resolve itself out, wi- resolve itself without having to cause. Financial distress to business owners. What, what do you guys think on that?
I'm, uh, Chairman Jensen, I'm inclined to agree with you. I, I was going to suggest a continuous specifically to address. Um, I mean, there's no question the number of calls is, it appears very high. And that's really concerning for one address to have. Um, what I would like. A, a greater insight into is, um, because of the, to me, the issue is like who's, who's in control and to what degree. And who's, who can we hold accountable? Cause on one hand you have events, um, maybe more family oriented. And then you have a, an, an event that, that are, a, a dancing event. And, and they, maybe they draw two separate audiences, I don't know. But, um, but without insight into, um, I, I mean, I suppose I could have looked up each night, these.
I did.
Were like, like which ones are, are they all on Friday? Are they all on Saturday or what time? And who's the person initiating the call? Is it an anonymous, anonymous referral? Is it, is it, is it the business owner like, um? Like they mentioned, they called once to have someone escorted out for trespassing. Um, you know, I, I, I kind of want a, a greater detail in.
Well, I'm looking at Ms. Kendall's list here and there's a good number of those that are on Wednesday, Thursday, Sunday, 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 Sunday.
See, and, and like, or if those are, um, you know, graffiti ones, like, yeah, that, that would be expect, I mean. Those could come in, those calls can happen anytime, right?
So out of the twenties, out of the twenty-six that are listed here, six of them were on days other than Friday or Saturday. Um, four of them are Sundays, two of them are graffiti. There were, was disorderly conduct, assault, criminal mischief, suspicious activity. But that could just be people coming to that parking lot on a random day, but six out of twenty-six, I mean, there's still twenty, so.
The interesting thing though is the most recent five or six are actually not, correct? At least I.
January and December. Ms. Kendall said those were all on Fridays and Saturdays if her mic didn't pick that up for you. Um, I would also be curious, we have a maverick in our corner of town and because of. The people that often go there for easy groceries or beverages or whatever. Um. Sometimes I feel a little unsafe and I can't help but wonder if it's just a large gathering place that happens to be in proximity to. A place where you can access alcohol. I, I don't know. And so I would be inclined to say, let's see if things change. I would, I would be inclined to say, let's, let's give some time for things to change if, I don't know. Mr. South, you're very pensive. What are your thoughts?
To me, this, this tells me that the process is working, right? Uh, the, our, our policing community is paying attention to areas where there's issues and we greatly appreciate that. Uh, our city services are paying attention to areas where these are repeating and so they're bringing that up. And this is the forum where these kinds of things need to happen. The only lever we have is to revoke a conditional use permit. And that doesn't seem to apply or be able to fit all of these things. But this is the forum where some of these connections are made, what the problems are, how we go about sorting them out.
Who to talk to about them?
To talk to, yep, and make those connections. And so I, I mean, I have to. I have to applaud our community for working together, making this, you know, to be able to figure these things, kind of, these kind of things out. I, I say, I support the idea that we, uh, continue and, and let this go and see what happens. Cause I think there's a lot of motivated people to try to address this and, uh, I think it's, it's good for our community, so.
Okay, if we are in general consensus on that, then let's have a motion and that motion. Would need to give a deadline, I think. So give a time parameter that you would like to continue for. Mr. Ardmore, guide us.
If I may, um, seeing where this is going, I, I feel like this is, continuing it is kind of a. de facto probationary period, uh, in a sense. Um, and for some of the improvements and and ideas that have been brought forward, I think uh there has to be a sufficient amount of time for those to lighting, uh, cameras, hiring of security guards uh, to take place. Um, so I wouldn't, uh, I wouldn't suggest the typical continuance of the next meeting or even the next month.
I'm thinking like three to six months. Would you err on the side of shorter or longer on that?
I I think that's fair.
It, in that case, do we deny it and then bring it up again if it needs to be addressed?
I would continue it, uh, just to.
So it doesn't leave the radar, I think. Okay.
That's my suggestion.
Thank you.
Well, well, in that case, I would.
Mr. Gonzalez, are you about to make a motion?
I would lean towards, uh, well, I mean, I think I wanna discuss before putting forward a motion, but I'd uh, like a minimum ninety days if if not, um.
Do we feel like three months is enough?
Maybe.
Six, six months.
Okay, we have a four months here so that it's a little longer than ninety days, but not as long as six months.
He he's right, it's gonna take time to get things put in place and then it's gonna take a little time for people to get used to the new pattern and change their behavior. So you wanna see results, you wanna see that what they're doing has made a difference, so.
Mr. Knutson, do you have any thoughts on this?
I just think that we're making a good selection here by doing what we're doing.
Okay, alright, can I can I ask?
I I do wanna say with, when this uh, when this gets revisi- if we're inclined to delay it for ninety or days or more that our staff report, um, kind of give a breakdown on, um, on on new incidents, um, and then what, you know, what what days they're occurring.
Days and days and times on the new incidents.
And uh, so we could really pinpoint if this is, uh, you know, the under- underlying property owner that needs to res- you know, take take some care. Is it, um, the event center with the, you know, having the receptions and and all that? Or or the dance club, um.
Is it the use or the location or the ownership or the security or what is it?
I like, I think we revocation of a conditional use permit is, it's a pretty severe act, um. And I think we, I don't say we want, I don't I don't think we wanna just do it all and affect everybody, we wanna really pinpoint who to hold responsible for, cause ma- maybe we, you know, if if things don't shape up, we might revoke one and keep the other.
You can modify it, correct? Not just revoke it. So we have that tool at our disposal.
We could establish additional conditions, um. Some of those which might sound like they'd be additional security conditions, um, if if there's a failure, if if there's a failure in 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 changes that doesn't adequately, um, you know, take care of that.
Okay, Ms. Kendall, you had something you were gonna say?
No, I was just gonna ask if it's appropriate for us to say what we expect to see, like, that we expect to see lighting and cameras and uh, patrolling of the parking lot. Is that appropriate or not really?
I I think, I mean, lighting and cameras and control the parking, that would be the property owner. Um, additional security would would probably be provided by the tenants. Um, and the use of the different uses and businesses. I'm I'm totally speculating here.
Mr. Pepperoni, is that within our purview to be that specific or would the outcome report on that?
Yes, I think it is and that, yes, the more specific you are, the more helpful that is. I mean, what has been talked about tonight is private security, whether or not it's off-duty Provo Police or not, there should be private security. The private security should also, um, monitor the parking lot and you can monitor a parking lot without stopping cars and frisking people. But you can monitor a parking lot that way. Cameras have been talked about, that should be encouraged and something that you're looking for when this comes back.
Okay, I just don't wanna make it a requirement such that if they decide to do something else, that we would pin them into a corner by saying, but you didn't do. So we could suggest it, but it it's okay for us to suggest and not require, or would you prefer we require?
Um, I think it would be great for you to suggest those things and what we're trying to do is see improved behavior and fewer police calls, right? So if they come up with other things that seem to be solving that, I think that's great and appropriate too.
Does anyone feel comfortable with that? I just don't wanna paint them into a corner.
Yeah, that's fine. And I I would add educating the patrons. So if you if you educate the patrons that when they come, that this is not gonna be tolerated and, you know, it won't be tolerated in the parking lot and everything, I think that helps too.
Mr. Castro, I'm inclined to say I don't need you to speak because I think that we're not gonna make a decision that's gonna hurt you right now. Is that okay? Okay, let's make a decision and move on. Commissioners, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we continue this item, um. Provo Development Services requested conditional use permit revocation of P L C U P two oh one nine zero three oh nine for a dance hall in the general commercial zone located at seventeen hundred North State Street, Carterville neighborhood, uh, until the the closest, uh, date approximating four months from now. Regularly scheduled meeting in four months.
How about no sooner than three months, no later than four? I just, I don't know, I I wanna put an end date on it versus a a start date, right? Just till August? We'll hear it again in August. Is that good with everyone?
Perfect.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion to continue item one as written, um, until August. With the, um, request that we see statistical breakdown of any police calls or problems that are being reported on days and times that they're happening.
And included in that, the recommendations that we've identified.
And explore those recommendations. Thank you. Okay. We have a motion to continue. Do we have a second?
All second.
Well, that was like a four-way tie almost. Mr. Knutson with the second on that motion. Any discussion on the motion?
Uh, and just just to be really clear, we're suggesting lighting, cameras, patrol of the parking lot are the key differences in what's currently happening.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Whitlock.
A, I.
Hi.
Mr. Gonzalez.
I. I.
I.
I will also vote I. So six of us in favor of continuing item number one. Thank you everyone for participating. And we'll see you in August. Okay, we will move on to item number two. This is a legislative item, which means we're just making a recommendation to the municipal council on this tonight. Provo City Development Services requests tax amendments to section fourteen point three four point zero six zero, which is the location of boats, boat trailers and travel trailers. And Abinadi Borja is going to present that to us. He is a member of the city staff in case there's any misunderstanding of who's standing before us.
Abinadi Borja, Code Compliance Officer, Provo City. Thank you. So there are three reasons why Development Services is looking to make this, uh, request, this change. Um, let me pull it up here. I'm going to go straight to the pictures just to show examples and talk about them specifically. Right now, the current text talks about these type of trailers. And these type of trailers, so RVs, campers, uh, boat trailers. Currently, we are able to address these concerns when we see them in the city and enforce on them accordingly. However, these types of trailers, other types of trailers, we are not able to. We want to be equitable when it comes to enforcement. When we go out to properties, we see that certain properties have trailers, other properties do not. So going to this specific slide. This one shows examples of trailers currently that we can enforce on. To, you see a couple of camper trailers there. And then they have other trailers on their properties as well that we cannot enforce on. So we, the first thing is we wanna show that the code right now lacks a little bit of clarity with that. We wanna make sure it's, we can clarify that. The second thing is occupancy. These camper trailers that you see there, uh, we we wanna allow uh, homeowners, we wanna allow them to have guests. And if the guests would prefer to stay in their RVs, we we want to allow that. So that's something that we are addressing. Currently, we don't address that. So if we have, there are properties out there that have actually people living inside their RVs, we can't address that. There's really nothing in the code that would address that. So that's the second thing that we would wanna address. And then the third thing is just adding the trailers, the definitions, making it more clear and making them, um, reflect more of what the state code would define it as. So those are the three, uh, reasons why we're looking to amend the section of code.
I have a question, um, regarding state code. There was, um, a question from one of the letters we received that talks about that, but also you say in the findings of fact that the definition will change to meet the state statute. So when you say that, you're just meaning that our definition of the various types of trailers and vehicles like of that sort would then align with how the state defines them? Is that what you mean when you're aligning it with the state code?
Yes, that is correct.
Any other questions? For Mr. Borja. I have a whole bunch, otherwise. Um, I wanna know how the enforcement staff will, um, will would tackle an occupied versus an unoccupied trailer. How do you? That just, that feels like just very awkward territory of, oh yeah, we're living in it, so we can stay here for seven days versus we're packing it for camping trips, we can only stay here for three days. That just seems like a nightmare. Um, I I I actually think this whole thing seems like a nightmare enforcement-wise and I don't envy you, should it move forward? But, um, that's one question I have. And then, um, my other question, I can't tell the difference in the language, so on page five of the staff report. Um, on one B, it says you can, you can be allowed in those areas that are normally not allowed to park a vehicle, provided the item is owned or rented by a bona fide guest. So that comes back to that, how do you know if they're visiting? How do you know if they're just storing there? Um, and then the next one, number two, says travel trailers and other recreational vehicles may be occupied on a temporary basis on a lot in a single-family residential zone for traveling guests or visitors, subject to the following. So what's the difference between one B and then the requirements in two? Are they just subsequent requirements or are they actually two separate situations?
So one B applies to the guests that are occupying that residence, so you.
Like grandparents from out of town living in their camper outside.
They are your guests. They they want to live in the RV or occupy the RV instead of occupying the house. So you can have them there up to seven consecutive days in a thirty-day calendar year, um, being there as long as they're parked properly.
And how does that one B differ from what you're saying in two? A and B? Is it basically the same thing? Do you understand my question? Okay.
So just to kinda clarify.
Tell us who you are, so everyone knows.
My name is Scott Johnson, I'm the zoning administrator. Um, I've been working with Abinadi on on this language. So one A specifically refers to the parking and storing of the trailer itself.
One B?
Sorry, one B, yes, thank you for that clarification. Two addresses the
Occupation.
The occupancy of the trailer.
Okay.
So one of the issues that we've seen a few times throughout the city is people have a travel travel trailer on their property that they're either renting it out to somebody to stay there or or the space on the property is being rented for somebody to just live there. And so it's being used essentially as a second residential unit on the property, which our code doesn't address specifically. And so we want to be able to address that specifically. And that's what two.
Okay, so one of them is basically saying, if you come, if grandma, grandpa come to visit and they're staying in the house, but they're leaving their trailer outside, it has to abide by these same parking rules. And then two is saying, and if someone's living in it, here's an additional list.
Right.
Okay. Um, then my last question about language there is in one. It seems like there's a word missing. It says, in the the black text says, may not be placed, kept or maintained within the front yard areas of any residential zones in a clear vision area of a corner lot. Um, is it supposed to be nor in a clear vision area of a corner lot or is that all supposed to be the same thought? I didn't know if it was two different situations I was describing there or one big long one. Come.
That should say it sh- it should say, well, it should continue from what the first part is saying. It shouldn't be parked in the front yard. It shouldn't be parked in a clear vision area.
So they're two different requirements? Not in a front yard, not in a clear vision area?
Yes.
Right. And then there's a third, or in a street side yard of the corner.
Okay, so maybe we just need a comma before or something to let them know there's three different thoughts.
Of any residential zones, comma, in a clear vision area of a corner lot, as defined in Provo City code.
Comma.
Oh, after code should be a comma.
Okay, so there's three different things there. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I've taken more than my share of time asking questions of staff. Does anyone else have questions for staff? Ms. Kendall?
I have a question. So the code already exists that you can't park in your front yard.
Yes.
Period. And do you get a lot of complaints from people about that? When they, when you try to enforce this, what happens? I mean.
Mo- most people comply within the given time that they're given. They are very understanding. We try to educate them first and let them know as to why the code exists and they are very understanding, they comply and case is resolved.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, once again, the applicant is Provo City, so this time we do not have an additional owner or anyone else that needs to address us. And it's citywide, so I think what I'll do is give three minutes to any neighborhood chairs or district chairs that would like to address this, like that are representing feedback you've received from neighbors. And then following that, we'll open it up for public comment. Mr. Pepperoni?
As you know, we have a very long agenda and I'm afraid we're not even gonna get through all of it. So ju- just to move this more expeditiously, could we have those people who wanna speak come line up? So we can move through people a little more more quickly.
Yeah, that's a great idea. And let me also say this, we received letters from Matt Peterson, Becky Bogdan, Robert Day, Eldon Johnston, Brian Sheets twice, and Karen and Jonathan Jonathan Salone twice. So if you said, if you are one of those people, please know we have read your comments and your concerns and, um, you have been heard. So if you, um, if you come to the podium, please don't repeat things that have already been said. Um, give us new information so that we can understand your concerns and move forward. Each, um, neighborhood pers- representative will be given three minutes. And each, um, community comment will be given two minutes. And we ask that you just come up one time, so decide what you're going to say and we'll hear you. Alright, neighborhood chairs, district representatives, neighborhood district representatives, are there any of those present that would like to speak to this item? Okay, then we'll open it up for general public comment. If there's anyone here who would like to share your thoughts on this, your concerns, your ideas, come to the podium, tell us your name and where you live. Actually, everyone, you know, line up on that front row, wait your turn, that sort of a thing.
Okay, so my name is Karen Salone, although I don't necessarily remember sending any information to you guys, so what?
You sent an uh, an email to staff or the the planning office and we get all of those letters.
Okay, so I mean, I did have communications with Abinadi, I guess I didn't know if he was gonna forward that on, but okay. So I don't know what you know that I've already, that I've said, I guess is my, okay, anyway.
Go ahead.
So, um, the first thing I'd like to say is that, um, just in general, if there are enforcement issues, like if you're having, if you come, if you're trying to enforce a code and you find there's discrepancies, I think it's a good time to reevaluate whether that code even needs to exist before you add more restrictions to it. Um, so, because I do feel like this is adding more restrictions to something that probably is unnecessary. Um, I don't see that with the picture, well, I don't know, there were pictures. I I don't feel like anyone's being harmed by having their neighbors park a boat or trailer in their driveway. I don't feel like anyone's rights are being infringed on, um. park a boat or trailer in their driveway. I don't feel like anyone's rights are being infringed on. Um, so, or even that property values are being affected. We already have ordinances in place to take care of like inoperable junk vehicles uh and the clear vision issues that have already been noted. Um, and there's probably more harm being caused by people that we're enforcing on, making them, you know, rearrange their landscaping, possibly remove a fence, or go pay for an offsite storage, so, storage for their trailer. I think that's more harm than driving by someone's house and seeing a trailer or boat or flatbed trailer or cargo trailer in the driveway. Um, and I do think, you know, Mrs. Kendall asked a question about the frequency of the enforcement. Um, they're still trying to get me some data on that, but I, what Abinadi alluded to was that currently there's three hundred enforcement cases and only three of them are for this ordinance. So that's like a one percent, one percent of all code enforcement is on these trailer issues, which to me seems like, let's just make it a non-issue and remove it. Um, so I would say that I would ask the planning commission to recommend denial of this ordinance amendment, and also to include a request to the council that they repeal section fourteen thirty-four oh six oh one. I think number two is fine. So that's what I'd like to say. Thanks.
My name is Jonathan Salo. When I live on the west side of Provo, and we don't currently have a neighbor chair. So the last time we went to the uh, at least district area meeting, we were talking to a few other individuals and actually just coming to work this morning um, on my road, which is less than a half a mile, this would affect twelve people. It actually doesn't affect me, but I'm, I'm, and as I went out and I've tried to talk to the, the people in the neighborhood, which they're all against this, really the ones you're hurting are the working class people. There's a lot of people, cargo trailers, flatbeds that use for construction. Uh, we have a lot of contractors in the area that, that whether they need, if they don't need it that day, they leave it in their driveway. Uh, so they're not always driving with these trailers. And uh, really by affecting them by trying to put it into storage unit, you're really affecting again, which I really say the the working class people, because that's the people carrying the cargo trailers and these construction trailers, the flatbed trailers. Um, also construction workers, when they go out and start re- uh remodeling homes, they have their dump trailers out there. They're unloading, and if they're over for a certain amount of time, you're gonna tell them that they gotta go leave and they gotta come back. So I mean, really, you're, you're only hurting the citizens by, by trying to push this. And I, and I kind of, I do agree that we repeal this, cause as I've talked to other individuals, they're not enforcing it. At least in my neighborhood, I talked to all the people that I talked to, no one's ever gotten a ticket. Um, I, in fact, most people actually don't even know that this even exists, at least the, I can speak for, for my neighborhood. And uh, they feel like, well, if it goes to council, then we're, we're gonna show up. But at the end of the day, it's like, I was, I was hoping there was gonna be more that showed up tonight, but um, yeah, I guess my recommendation would be also to repeal and realistically, if this, if this continues to go through, you're really only hurting the, the working class people. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't see a line here. Are there any other public comments?
My name is Art Phillips. I live on the southwest side, I guess you wanna call it. Uh, I don't think anybody knows that this was a meeting tonight. You can tell. Uh, I have a, a trailer. I have a house. I worked all my life to pay for that house. I pay unreal taxes, which jumped up five hundred dollars this year. I have a camp trailer. I have a car trailer. I have a little red trailer that I let, let all the neighborhood borrow to haul trash to clean up. This is my wife talking. And it is kind of outrageous. I put a pad on the side of my house to put my camp trailer in. So it is well out of sight, if you wanna call it that. Uh, I've got a twenty-four foot car trailer that I just purchased. I used to own one when I was in drag racing, but it had to sit on the street because it was too large to put beside the house. So I figure that I own my driveway. So it's in my driveway now. This feller here says that he doesn't know anybody that's got tickets. I got two. I come down and appealed them, but why didn't they give me a warning? Then I could have did something with it. But I've got my car trailer in the driveway. Why does that have anything to do with parking on the street and saying, I can't own that? I worked all my life to get where I'm at. I own my house. I own everything that I own. I don't owe anybody any money, except the state of Utah, the United States, and Provo City, which keeps going up in price. I can't even afford. And my social security went up thirty dollars this year. Then my.
I have a question for you. Could you clarify the tickets that you said you got? Were they for parking in the street or in your driveway?
They were for parking in the street.
Okay.
But I don't understand any of this stuff here. You gotta have a lawyer to understand this. To find the fine points, which I think you, somebody brought up something about changing a word or something. The wording just gets you. But yes, they were on the street, but my one trailer had been there since last fall after the car showing was over. Like I said, I'm out of drag racing now because they closed the strip down in Salt Lake. But my wife had to have a trailer to go camping with her family for reunions. So she purchased a trailer. I made a pad. I put it over the side of the house. Somewhere I thought it was written, you can't have the tongue past your wall of the house. I don't know.
Thank you.
But yes, I got a, I got a ticket for my truck. I don't understand that at all.
Thank you.
I can understand maybe the trailer. But anyway, I contested them and they give me a reprieve. But anyway, my time's over.
Thank you.
You guys have heard my personal comments, but I do wanna say that there are many people in the neighborhood in Lakewood that I have heard from that affirm what the letters that you guys have gotten and my comments and everything, that they would like the opportunities to park in their driveway. They don't see an issue with that, um especially utility trailers, because those are work trailers and they're not as tall as some of those camp trailers are as long. Anyway, thanks.
Good afternoon. Um, my name is Dalton Johnson. I'm one of the ones that sent the letters in. Um, I won't try, try not to repeat what I put in the letters, you said you heard it, uh to say one thing. Um, I hope this is a move where we can actually fully repeal uh these statutes. I do think it is unfair. Um, I do understand the points that the uh city is talking about on some of the things with um, with some of the problems that happen when people are living in their trailers long term. Um, I've read notes about the great waterways being uh not taken care of responsibly, and I, I, I understand that. Um, but there's a lot of us who are working to have the homes we have. Um, we, we make, we pay our taxes, we pay part of all that, that's all been said. Um, but I think there needs to be uh I think some leniency on this, cause I don't think going stricter on this is gonna help anybody in any way, shape, or form. Um, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, we'll close the public comment portion of this hearing. And commissioners, we um can discuss this amongst ourselves. I have lots of thoughts that have been bouncing around in my head since we learned of this. Any comments, discussion, concerns, ideas? Mr. Knutson?
Seems like one of the, when people have been talking about this issue, they keep bringing up this thing about pads. Uh, even my son was asking me about it the other day. Was there ever a part of this ordinance that said that there had to be a pad? Cement pad, gravel pad for the trailer to be on?
As opposed to just being
Yeah.
On dirt next to.
Great question. Uh, another section of our city code does address RVs, campers. They do require to have an off-street parking space, which currently how the code states, it needs to be in the side or rear yard. But that is a requirement for RVs, campers.
Is required.
It, it is required to have an off-street parking space specifically for that vehicle.
It has to be cement or gravel?
Cement, gravel, anything paved. Just, just off-street.
But is it referring to the space or the improvement of the space? Like, does it need to be improved at all, as long as it's off-street?
So the, the code of the way it's written, it needs to be paved and off-street, since currently the way it's written, it cannot be in the front yard. It would be in the rear or side yard, wherever there's space allowed. So that way that space is recognized by Provo City.
And what if there's not space allowed? Is there an exception for that?
We, we would work with the, with the owner to see how we can find space on, on their property. That, that would be an option.
All right, commissioners, I am worried about the massive public outcry when vehicles that have been parked illegally but not enforced for years are suddenly made aware of this. Um, I've known for thirty years that you're not allowed to park a recreational vehicle in front of the front line of your house. But some of these pictures in here are vehicles in my neighborhood that have been parked in front of their house in those locations for at least twenty years. So maybe nobody's complained about it, and that's why they've never been enforced. But I just feel like, where are all the trailers gonna go? The, a lot of those, that, some of those pictures are streets in my neighborhood that have just, and I, I agree that it, this hurts the small scale laborers more than anyone else. And how do we enforce this consistently on such a large scale? This, this is a huge scale. If, if I could say, we can walk our streets and say there's twelve violators, even without this text amendment, there's twelve violators on my street. So you add the, you add the construction trailers, the junk trailers, and I'm not saying this shouldn't be a thing. That's not my argument. My argument is that logistically, it'll be a nightmare, and I think, I don't really think that it's three out of three hundred. I think that perhaps enforcement hasn't been working on this because they knew that this language was being modified, and it was harder to enforce when it was inconsistent. And I think it's just gonna open the floodgates. So I, I'm gonna throw this idea out. Why um, why can't we just enforce the on-street parking? And maybe junk vehicles, like was suggested. I don't want someone's trailer in my line of sight on their driveway. I don't want it right up against my house in the ten-foot setback either. But until someone can, I just haven't seen enforcement of the current law happen in the fact that there's a boat that's been parked in someone's front yard just down the street from me for twenty-plus years, never ever moved, except when they were using it. If that stuff isn't getting enforced before we modify the language, before there's a conflicting trailer use in their front yard, I just, I don't see how we can make this modification to the language if we can't even enforce the, the current violations. Um, I don't have a problem with somebody who's a construction worker who brings, who brings his trailer home and parks it in front of, i- in his driveway. I have a problem if it's there for, there, one of these pictures has a trailer full of junk in the road, and I can tell you that hasn't moved for at least a year. I have a problem with that. A trailer full of junk that's just sitting in the street. I can see that that's kind of where the intent of this was going was to, to keep our city streets from becoming parking lots. And if we have these vehicles that aren't used every day for work, they never leave. We've got a seventy-two hour parking ordinance that addresses that, that could, I think, take care of some of this, but I would really be hesitant to modify the language and start enforcing even more violations if we can't even enforce the violations that we currently have. That's, those are my more than two cents. Thoughts?
I'm curious about some, some language I think we, maybe we could agree on, like um two C, the discharge of
Yeah.
sewage, black water. Like, we should be able to, that's, that should be a unanimous approval. A, a, a change that we could all agree on. Um.
Well, I even agree with all of the definitions of trailers. I think that those are important. I'm just, I'm just worried about the hugeness. I don't even know if that's a word. I'm worried about the enormity of this task and whether it's even feasible.
If I can share like an example, I, I, I know of this uh situation in Orem where you have a private property owner who, who has a large, a large parcel with multiple uh campers on site, and they, and they use it as a, I don't even know if they rent any of those things. In fact, I'm pretty sure they don't. They, they use it as a homeless encampment, like he, he houses homeless people. Um, which is a really noble and necessary thing. Um, I'm glad he does that, but um, he has been subject to multiple neighborhood complaints, though, and zone enforcement complaints. So I, there's some type of balance that needs to occur between uh giving the city um, you know, power to, to enforce uh health and safety regulations for the community, while also recognizing the needs of, of community members to to park their trailers on their own property.
This is really hard, because I think the intent of this ordinance is to make Provo a nice community. Um, to make it look nice, to make it not be a parking lot. Um, and there would be some that would argue, if you don't have room for something, then maybe you shouldn't own it. But that's really tricky. So what are your thoughts, Mr. Whitlock?
I, I, I agree with a lot of what you said. Um, I, I was driving around close to my, my mother's house up kind of uh by Slate Canyon, and I, and I was driving with Rachel, my wife, and I was like, they'd be in violation, they'd be in violation, they'd be she's like, well, blah, and like this new, this thing we're trying to change the city code, she's like, why? And it's like, and I get that it's a minor inconvenience or my minor eyesore, but I don't see damage being done personally. Um, that being said, I really agree with almost all of two. I think two is uh, is a necessary needed regulation, but I think there's a lot of problems with one, and it's current, in my anecdotal experience, it doesn't seem like it's being enforced at all.
Very small percentage, anyway. Ms. Kendall, you have thoughts?
Well, I think I, I agree with what you've said also. I think enforcing, having them on the street is, is a safety issue. There's one in our neighborhood that I almost hit in the dark, like, I have to remember, cause sometimes they move it this way, sometimes they move it that way to get around the seventy-two hour thing. And then I don't know where they have it, and it's dark, and sometimes I've almost clipped it. So, you know, because it's one of those small see-through, but it's metal, and it's parked on the street constantly. So there are safety issues with parking those sorts of things on the street. Um, but it just doesn't matter. We have laws about those things, and they need to be enforced. So I agree.
Mr. Whitlock?
And just to clarify specifically what I'm talking about, I'm talking about people parking the trailer on their driveway in their side or their side.
That's the one that you don't have a problem with.
I'm saying I see it everywhere. Like, if, if you're going specifically by the rule that it can't be in front of the front house.
Almost all of them.
Yes, that's what I'm specifically talking about. I a hundred percent agree with uh what was just said about the street having safety issues.
And I, I also agree with a- almost all of number two. It's just that that brings in not within the front yard areas also. So if you're gonna park something on, in your driveway, it, it, you know, two says again, not within the front yard area. So I, I couldn't park something in my side yard. I don't know.
Neither could I. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, I almost don't even wanna vote on this and just let city council we're, we're not even elected, but we're a recommending body, right?
Yeah.
Uh, just cause, yeah, it was a difficult one.
Mr. South? Mr. South, do you have some ideas?
Well, just maybe a question back to the why. I appreciated the initial comment uh, from Abinadi that they were trying to be consistent about how we're treating this and I totally get that. And item two, also agree, like that's, you know, those are some important things to be addressed. But what's, what is the why for this and, and why the attention to it right now? And maybe if you could comment a little bit on the anecdotal observations that oh, there seems to be a lot of enforcement issues here and what is the bigger picture? What's the objective here?
I'll go ahead and address that and then also make maybe a suggestion for, um, for you. Yes, we do see violations of how the code is currently written throughout the city. We have a difficulty enforcing on one type of trailer or not the other, especially when we see them very close together in the same neighborhood and specifically on the same property. And so there, I agree, there has been a lack of enforcement on that. Um, sorry, I lost my train of thought for a second. Um, so yes, we could do, we could do better on that. The, the main um, idea that we wanted to get across with this is that the code, the way the code is currently written isn't equal across the board with all types of trailers. We want to make it equal across the board with all types of trailers. Um, if it'll, if it's more digestible for you to make a recommendation positively to the city council to allow these trailers to be parked on a driveway, we'd be happy to make that amendment and bring it back to you, the next planning commission. Um.
I think from what we've heard people say that that might be, that might be, um, addressing a lot of the community outcry and it might also be addressing our concerns. Like aesthetically, it would be in a nice utopian world. It would be great if everybody had room on the side of their house to park their things. But, but the street seems to be the main objective to keep. I mean, they'll still have workarounds where they moved to not get their tires marked, but that seems like a, a better direction to go initially. I don't know.
It seems that it addresses maybe some of the concern about, um, you know, being able to park, you know, on their property, but I think there's probably also a number of people that are concerned about the aesthetic aspect as well. So if we brought anything forward, we have the potential of having a really big discussion to your, to your comment about it being enormous. I think that's probably accurate. So how do we tackle something? We're kind of nipping at the fringes here of an issue that has potential to be much bigger. How do we get to the root of it and really understand what we, what we as a community value with respect to this part of the ordinance? And that's not why it's being brought forward. But it does have the, it seems like if we start pulling this thread, it could really, could really go large.
What do you think commissioners? Thank you for those suggestions.
Is there another way to get a pulse on how the community feels about this rather than just those who are being affected or have observed it or?
Is this on open city hall right now? It is? Very much feedback? How long's it been on? This is Rachel Breen from the city council office that I'm asking this question to.
Sorry, Rachel Breen, city council, community, um, relations analyst. Um, I put it on open city hall, I think about a week ago and we haven't had any feedback on it. And I did advertise it to the neighborhoods that it is on open city hall and this has been brought out to all the neighborhoods. Um, they are very much aware of this.
Was the comment at the district meetings that you've been presenting this at, was was the feedback similar to what we've heard in public comment today or were there people that were, that's a great idea? Like, were you hearing positive comments?
I don't think I heard any positive comments, but it hasn't been presented to every neighborhood. Some boards felt like it wasn't important enough in their neighborhood to have it presented. And then other ones did. They had, uh, Ben, Abinadi Borha came and spoke about it. And most people were curious or didn't like it. They didn't like the idea of the city telling them what they can use their driveway for.
Thank you. I think there is, if there was a wide knowledge of this and everyone was aware, I think this language adaptation would be not a problem at all. But I think because there's so much ignorance that this is even a rule on the books, um, I think it's, it's just gonna be a really, really tough sell. Ms. Kendall?
So can I ask, are you saying then that we could have you come back with something a little different that maybe we could get the low-hanging fruit and start there? Like, let's start with the street. Let's start with occupancy, the occupancy issues. Because those do seem like real concerns. You know, you can't have somebody renting out their trailer for a month to somebody in their driveway.
Right, absolutely. Um, so just a one minor point of clarification. This doesn't address anything in the street. This is all on private property. Um, and so the suggestion that I am making is that you suggest, you recommend that we go back and make some minor tweaks to the language to allow these trailers to be parked on somebody's driveway in the front yard area.
Because the street is already addressed by the seventy-two-hour parking restrictions is what you're saying?
Right.
Alright commissioners?
Well, I mean, don't we still have issues though with seven, more than seven consecutive days or thirty days in a calendar year or the sewage? I mean, those things even on property, I guess. That seems like things we could.
Right, but I think he's saying you would do it all as one package, that he would address those things and, and some other language that would soften the blow perhaps. I remember, the reason I like this idea, I would have always been a big-time advocate for follow the zoning ordinances. It makes for nice neighborhoods. And so I've always been one of those people, park your trailer behind your house line. Don't you know that's a rule? Like in my head, you know, not really being a rabble-rouser. And it wasn't until last year when somebody brought this to a work meeting and discussed this, that my understanding of how, um, different people's perceptions were, came to me. And so even though I still share that, I would really like it to be a nice, clean, tidy neighborhood and I really don't like people's trailers parked everywhere. I, I feel like I understand their feelings better about it. And, um, my understanding a year ago when this, or however long it's been since like we had this in a work meeting was that they were gonna try and change it because of the public outcry. So I was surprised to see that it came back with, with the, the, still these restrictions. Um, so I know that it's not outside the rabble discussion was the reason I was sharing that, that this has been discussed before as, as not met with great public adoration. So, um, I would say let's move forward and make a motion to continue, it sounds like, with for development services to, parking services to bring us enforcement services. Zoning enforcement, thank you. I'm like, what's the right sequence of words I'm trying to spit out? For them to bring something, um, to us that addresses the things we've discussed today. Does that sound like a good direction to go? Alright, then I'll entertain a motion if someone wants to make one. I need to be on the end so I can see everybody at once.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to continue. Item number two, Provo City Development Services request text amendments to section fourteen point three, four point zero six zero. Location of boats, boat trailers and travel trailers, city application, citywide application.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez has made a motion to continue item number two. Do we need to give you a deadline for that? Till we are ready? Okay, next meeting? Alright, do you have a second on the motion?
Do we need to, uh, include in the motion the suggestion to allow for parking on driveways or just is the communication here sufficient?
I think that's sufficient.
Okay. Okay, cool. Then I second.
Alright, Mr. Whitlock has seconded the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, Mr. Whitlock?
Aye.
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 And I will also vote aye. So six votes in favor of continuing this to, they're ready to bring it back to the next meeting. Alright. Was item number three continued? Thank you. Alright, um.
Uh, Chairman, I, can I move to take a five-minute break?
Alright, you've got five minutes and no longer.
Thank you.
I guess we need a second and whatever, but we're gonna take a five-minute recess.
Yeah.
With the side carving.
Yeah.
That's as big as.
Want to vote on that? Like, I don't.
But like, you don't want track. Yeah, if, if they're. Yeah, there's like a guy kind of. Yeah, he has a trailer full of old furnaces. Like, I don't know. Frequently he had. Change this at all. It's just, I just know like, oh, this is a popular spot on the road.
I'm gonna ask you first. The fifteen? Okay. We are ready to resume. We're going to move on with item number four and item number five together. It's the same applicant for the same project. Um, I will read them both in. And then, um, Mr. Ardmore will present on them and we'll have the applicant speak to both of them at the same time and have community comment on that as well. Alright, item number four is administrative, so, um, planning commission will make a decision on it tonight. Item number five is legislative, so we will just make a recommendation to the municipal council. Item four, Steve Turley requests concept plan approval for a mixed-use development with apartments and commercial use in a proposed mixed-use zone over two acres of land located at twenty-seventy-five West Center Street in the Provo Bay neighborhood. And item number five, Steve Turley requests a zone change from the R-one-eight one-family residential zone to the mixed-use zone for approximately two acres of land located at twenty-seventy-five West Center Street in the Provo Bay neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Um, so I'll try to be a little more brief with this, not repeat things that we, we covered in the last meeting that you saw this. Um, but just as an overview, uh, the, I went too far. The property, uh, twenty-seventy-five West Center Street, uh, is, is before you for, for the two applications. Uh, the, the site plan, uh, has been revised, as have the floor plans and elevation. So I think what might make the most sense is skipping ahead. Um, so let me just go over why this was continued real quickly. Um, the planning commission at the last hearing continued this, uh, and wanted to address six specific criteria. I'm just gonna read those in, uh, to remind everybody. Provided draft of development agreement detailing the amenity space. Have the number of units solidified. Redistribute the number of units or de, or decrease the number in the proposal to transition from the north to the south. Provide a plan with no parking reduction request, put the highest and most intense use on the north corner. And have verification from privacy engineering on preferred access points. Uh, so I think you could see on the site plan and the summary table of parking in front of you. They have satisfied the majority of those conditions. Uh, the, the parking is now meeting the mixed-use zone standard. Um, granted with the discount, the twenty-five percent discount that that zone gives. Uh, so they've, they've come back and met that. They have provided the more detailed floor plans. Uh, you'll find these in your staff report. Hopefully you've had the chance to review those. Uh, so they've solidified the sixty units through the two buildings. Uh, the elevations do transition from north to the south from three stories to two, uh, to be respective of the R-one zoning uh, to the west, east and south of them, uh, as they transition into the R-one zone. Uh, so those things have been addressed. The zone change is still for the two acres to be zoned to the mixed-use zone and then the remaining uh, portion of the property in the yellow there. Uh, that's currently all one piece of property, uh, that would remain as R-one-eight, uh, single-family residential zone. That would remain as R18, single-family residential zone. So you'll note in the staff recommendations that we aren't recommending denial this time, we're actually recommending adjusted zone change request. So we would support because of the general plan. We want to stand by the general plan, we want to stand by the southwest neighborhood plan. We think those are valued documents that have been adopted by the council and we should follow them. So we would suggest that rather than rezoning the two acres to the mixed-use zone that the north acre essentially what is shown here on the right side of the screen where that commercial mixed use comes down is approximately one acre of the property, the north one acre. We would suggest that be rezoned to the mixed-use zone so that the north building could still happen. We could still get a good mixed-use product on that property. You can get the commercial use on the corner, we can get residential above it and meet the the objectives and the goals of our general plan without expanding and going against the general plan, going against expectations of the the city and of the neighbors for this property. So that is a staff recommendation to deny the concept plan as shown, but to recommend approval to the City Council of the zone change limited to the north one acre. That is all I have.
How many units are in that north acre? Do you know?
Yes. Let me go back there for you. So I believe there was. Am I counting 24?
That's what I see. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ardmore? Commissioners?
Thank you.
Mr. Whitlock?
These mics are killing me. So just so I understand clearly what staff's position is, is to basically the reason for the approval of the zone, recommending an approval to recommend to the City Council the zone change, but not the concept plan is because of that second half of the development that's on the R1?
Yeah, yeah, so essentially what's being requested is doubling the size of what was anticipated to be mixed use and doubling the density on that parcel of what was expected. So we would support just the north acre as the general plan would support, but nothing more.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Can you remind us what the density was of that two acres that was proposed before? Like, how many units? Remember, we had a question on how many units are actually, where was it still around 60 then?
So, yeah, so last time it is front of you, there was disagreement between some of the papers between 70 and 60 units. It's definitely 60 being requested.
So it hasn't necessarily changed, it's just been firmed up?
It's been, yeah, confirmed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron? So you're saying that, I mean, I have no objection to the north building. But you're saying that they would be, that would be the end of it, that would be the one acre, would just be the north building?
That's what staff could support, yeah.
That's what the staff would support.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. The applicant can now come speak. We have a 15-minute limit for applicants, but you have two items, so we'll give you some wiggle room.
I will be very fast. Thank you for your time. A year ago, I presented and shared a concept plan and was given marching orders to change it. We did that when we met in January. We came here, we got six very very detailed recommendations that you asked for us to address. I hand you these hastily-prepared binders just for the ease of reference. You'll see on the, if you'll turn to tab number one. Commissioners Gonzalez and Jensen, you ask for clarity as to the development agreement for the amenities. We provided that. Our proffer in the development agreement, which is attached behind tab number one, is our rooftop amenity, including patio, canopy, deck, barbecue, fire pit, pet, exercise space, gardens, kitchenette, lounge furniture, and storage. If there's any questions, all that information is behind tab number one. Behind tab number two, Commissioner Short, Commissioner Jensen, Commissioner Gonzalez wanted clarity as to the units. There are 60 units and that's the breakdown of the commercial space and then also the residential units. Behind tab number three, Commissioners Whitlock, Commissioners Jensen, Commissioners Kendall ask to redistribute the number of units in the proposal to transition to the south. And you'll see from the cover photo or the cover elevations, we've demonstrated how we go from a three-story building down to a two-story building on the north. And then to make that appropriate transition all the way to the south, it's simply a two-story building that will interface with the residential units to the south. To emphasize this, we're talking about a two-story house with a 12-pitched roof to the south will be taller than the building that we provided on the south portion of these two acres. I actually would draw your attention to the height of the buildings. The ridge and the eve heights, you'll see how the north building is significantly higher than the south building. Behind tab number four, we were asked to provide a plan with no parking reduction request. Commissioners Whitlock and Commissioners Jensen were pretty adamant about this and were pleased to show that we provide the parking that's allowed for in the mixed-use zone. And exceeded, actually. I also want to emphasize, we're providing 50 covered stalls and 50 stalls that will have electric vehicle charging stations as well. Behind tab number five, you asked the highest, Commissioners Jensen and Kendall asked that the highest and most intensity is put on the north corner. We have, most of our intensity is there, it's the commercial and it's also the residential units. I would direct you to tab six. The request that we verified from Provo City Engineering on the preferred access points that with Public Works and they confirmed that the three areas that we have identified for driveways, both Center Street to Geneva Road and to 130 South are all in the ideal locations. I want to simply by way of clarification, share with you that some information that we had addressed to the Planning Commission wasn't provided in our last meeting, and that's behind tab A. And this was a letter addressing the general plan and it's the quotes, it's the stuff that comes from the neighborhood plan that is pretty exhaustive in terms of discussing why we believe this is absolutely in conformance with the general plan. When the neighborhood plan says those lines on the general plan, on our blobs, when they ebb and flow and there's meant to be some give and take, that's what we did. When we were told to exercise some discretion and be able to talk about logical boundaries, that's what we did. You can read it for yourself and perhaps arrive at the same conclusion as to how confusing it is that the position has changed now by city staff. Behind tab B is the discussion about sewer capacity. The question was asked at the last meeting about sewer capacity and Public Works was pretty adamant that the sewer is not a problem for this area. I will also, I just want to mention, I did send a letter to you all because I thought the minutes were incomplete. There was a robust discussion about sewer in the staff report. And then when Public Works clarified it last time at the meeting, it didn't even end up in the minutes. I've talked to council members who said that those minutes are pretty important to them. And so I made the request that actually what was said at the meeting was actually what was included in the in the report of the meeting, and I was a little disappointed that didn't happen. Behind tab D is an updated parking study. I am not asking for any reduction, but I do want you to know if you flip to page four in that report, you'll see the under, so I'm behind tab D, I'm on page four and it's in figure two where you'll see that because there's no use of the commercial parking at 2:00 AM in the morning, the only use will be residential parking at the time. And you'll see that the same traffic engineer, the Provo City trusts for their parking study is the same traffic engineer that we're providing to you right now that says the maximum use of parking on that site will be 90 units. And then finally, I just want to address this last-minute discussion of, hey, let's just rezone one acre. And I'll direct you to that final tab E in your binder, the one that has some lovely pastel colors. I think someone in my office was in the Easter spirit as they did this. I'm gonna say this pretty firmly. The rezone of a single acre will not work. Let me explain, if you look at this top drawing right here, if we were to do the single, or utilize the one acre, we're basically creating a strip mall, period. If we used, if we had 10,000 square feet, which is the requirement of the mixed-use zone, it would require 51 stalls and you can only get 51 stalls on the site. So there's no breathing room, there's no extra space. If you go down to the second drawing, if this was actually zoned that mixed use, you'll see that the commercial, if we were doing that 25% reduction which is allowed by the zone, it allows for this, I don't know what color that is, that's an Easter egg color, that kind of this one on the left. That's what parking would be required for the commercial use and you have 12 stalls left over for residential use. And so the maximum that you could do, and I'll be really honest, I'm not comfortable with it. It doesn't work. You're talking about eight units could be incorporated into that zone on the, if we were only to rezone the north acre, it wouldn't work. The commercial requirement in the mixed-use zone is 10,000 square feet. You can't add eight units to that and have a viable project. And so if you're inclined in that direction, I will tell you right off the bat that the we'll go in a different direction. There's no appetite on our part to make this significant of investment, to know at the outset that it'll fail. Finally, if I can draw your attention to this bottom representation of the site, if it was to be fully built out using the 10,000 square feet that's obligated as part of the, it's the very first step you take, if you want to have the mixed-use zone, you have to have 10,000 square feet of commercial. If you do that, then you add the residential units that are allowed by that zone at the density that is requested by the neighborhood plan. You would add those 30 units there which would add parking, you'll see the yellow parking is for the residential. And you'll see that that parking spills over into the vacant acre to the south. And so you're gonna burn up over half of that acreage there to the south, which is in violation of the zone itself because it says you gotta have all your parking screened behind the building. It doesn't work. And so with all due respect to the effort to encourage approval for the single acre, it won't work. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Turley? All right, looks like you can sit down. Thank you. All right, do we have a neighborhood or district representative here for this? Ms. Breen, have you been sent to read something?
Yes, I have. So Rachel Breen, City Council Community Relations Analyst on behalf of Brian Taylor, the District Three Chair. He says he is in support of staff recommendations on this project and he apologizes for not being here.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any members of the community that would like to come and address this? Come on up, tell us your name. Where you live?
My name is Rick Cox. I'm a property owner on the northwest, or excuse me, northeast corner of Geneva and Center Street. And I'm here to speak in favor of this higher-density project. One of the difficulties we've had is getting enough people at the west side to generate the interest of grocery stores to come into the west side. And we need to have a grocery store. We also need other services that would be benefited by having higher-density development in the west end. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you? Dave Lewis, I just live a couple blocks to the north of this. I'd love something like this in our neighborhood. I agree with Rick and I disagree, I think it should be the full two acres that are in the pink. So I'm in support, I like the elevations, I like the look. I like the commercial component and the amount, I like the mix of parking. I think it will be a great addition to that area as proposed. So I think the full two acres is what I am encouraging you to approve. Thanks.
Thank you.
Frank Gilbert, I live down West Center Street. I'm in favor of this project because, you know, one, it's gonna bring businesses into the west side. You know, you get the west side, you know, you know, needs the business and then it needs, you know, the economical growth. And, you know, I, you know, we don't have any really any other places except for Subway and 7-Eleven Pizza. You know, we need, you know, more variety into that area and this project will bring it in. And plus, you know, bring in some residents in also. And so, you know, it'll be a nice addition to the west side. That's all.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Vicky Gilbert. A little short. And I also live on West Center Street. And there's not much more I can say than what everybody else has already said. But that area is, just looks drab right now. And I think this will bring not only the residents and the money and some money and you know, businesses, it'll make that area look a lot better because it really, it just looks down. You know, it just doesn't look right. But that's, like I said, whatever everybody else has said, I agree with all of them.
Thank you.
Becky Bogdan, Provo, Utah. I agree with staff's recommendation, I think we all want to see a variety of housing types. But as we all know, we spent a long time in getting the west side area plan, where it is, how many sewer connections need to be where they are. And it was a big ordeal and we had a lot of public input on that. And so to change things, it just doesn't make sense without a dang good reason. There are places for mixed use in that area plan. And it went under a lot of scrutiny and a lot of public input and a lot of time. And so I am in full support of staff's recommendation just to keep with what we have and what the residents have. We've had people trying to have more density and more density and more density on the west side. And every time, you know, we come back and we say, hey, that just doesn't work because that plan is what it is and we have to have it for specific reasons. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Mitchell. I do think that in looking at the rezoning of this section, it's important to think of why it's being kept away from that mixed use on that lower, on that further south acre. The reason generally is you want to keep that higher traffic away from some of those driveways that are across the street, right? But I think that it's important to notice that the development there is on that east side and all the traffic is coming in from either Center Street or down near the bottom. So there won't be a whole lot of actual traffic going across those driveways and I do And I do think that that's something to take into account as you're looking at the rezoning of it. So I am for the, the mixed use of the, the two full acres. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we will close the public hearing portion of this item. Commissioners, do you have questions for staff or for the applicant that need resolved? Or ideas or comments? Ms. Kendall?
I just wanna clarify, so can I ask, Mr. Turley? There were sixty units in the first proposal we saw and there are still sixty units now? Just the elevations have changed, is that correct?
We thought we were understanding your, your request to redistribute the units. And so we moved units towards the north and towards the upper building so that we would have that lower density, that lower intensity to the south.
So how many are actually to the south in that second acre? What's the, what's the density?
But it was a, but it's a, it's a longer stretch of building, but it's only two, so I'm not, sorry, I'm not exactly sure.
Well, it was sixty total and twenty-four in the north section, so.
And I didn't think that count was quite right, but, but it's, it's in the ballpark.
I don't actually have a problem with the scale, like the drawings are fine, but it's the density. I'm trying to honor the, the limitations that have just, that are just, they just are on the west side. The staff report talks about the four units per acre density limitation and that we need to hold property owners and developers to that standard. At the last meeting, we were told that there was a plan that had already gone through and was approved for single family. Um, if this wasn't approved. Um, and then that recommendation too, that we've bumped into on a couple of other projects throughout the city where the general plan asks us not to expand multifamily at the expense of single family. So even though it's a bubble and it's, it's not a set boundary, it doesn't really comply with the policies, the maps of the general plan. So those are my concerns. In theory, it's, it's a lovely idea, but I don't feel like, I feel like the visual scale has met what we asked for with the higher intensity on the north end, but the actual density of housing units hasn't reduced. We still have sixty sewer hookups in an area that's only slated for thirty or whatever the number is that it's supposed to be on that first acre. So. Mr. Knutson?
Yeah, that's kind of my feeling. Uh, when we did the west side area plan, we did have some nodes that are further downward to Lakeview road that were to be medium or higher density. And that's where something like this to me was supposed to be located. If we uh, go against what they said, we're, we're going against what they said by raising it to this density. So that's my feelings about it.
A larger area to that density. Mr. Whitlock?
Yeah, I, I kinda see it differently. Um, I, I, I remember this last meeting, I read the general plan. It clearly does say that that circle is intended to be flexible. I understand your counterpoint, which is we're not supposed to sacrifice, you know, single family for more dense uses. But I still feel like it is in spirit of that intersection is supposed to be mixed use. You have a developer who's willing to develop it. It's not a beautiful property by any means currently. Um, that's sixty units of housing we could use for the city. It's a nice plan, he did most of the things we asked for. That's kinda how I feel about this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just echo uh, the sentiments of Commissioner Whitlock.
Ms. Kendall?
I just, I'm trying to understand why you can't just do the higher density on that one parcel and get the parking that you need there too. Can you do underground parking? I mean, isn't there a way to do that? Can you do underground parking? No.
Probably not out there.
Oh, okay.
Mr. South?
Um, I feel, I feel similar to Commissioner Whitlock. Um, looking at this specific parcel, what we have currently, what we're trying to do, the difference between one acres and two acres in terms of the number of units and what that looks like at that node. Uh, I think it's a, it's a net gain. It's not perfect, it doesn't perfectly align with the bubbles that we've got drawn, but I think it does stay true to the overall intent of the plan. And I, I, I think it makes sense.
I don't feel like a whole lot has changed since we saw this last. And I think that's what I'm having a hard time with.
Well, I anticipated that the density would decrease. When you decrease the height, that the density of the whole project would decrease.
And so in my mind, I thought it would come back with, I would be okay with changing the zoning if it actually was a lower density of housing, but I, I don't have a problem with it being two acres necessarily. It's two acres built out as intensely as possible that is. Is there a height restriction, Mr. Ardmore? In the zone that means that north end can only have as many as it has?
Yes, I was, yes, I was just looking at that. Let me pull that up.
That's still many.
Uh, sixty-five feet is the maximum height for the zone?
It's forty-seven feet to the ridge.
Part of it for me, I think also was, i- if I remember our original discussion correctly, it was trying to step down into the aesthetic character. And I think we do have that here, the way that the form steps, we, we do get it. I mean, it isn't just the same, uh, you know, three stories all the way across. That wasn't exactly what was proposed initially, but we do, we do get the aesthetic steps that we were looking for.
And I guess I was anticipating that would be a step down in density also. So that, you know, like you get apartment complex, then you get townhomes, then you get single family homes. Like that's the step down, not just
Right.
only in elevation, but in density. So what happens if you rezone one acre? If we recommend to rezone one acre and then uh, on the other one, just continue it and see if there's another rework, another way to make this go.
I see where you're going, but I think that's probably overly messy. I don't know. I have a question that maybe Mr. Day needs to help us with. You have been quoted as saying there wasn't a problem with this number of units at the last time we addressed this. Is that still correct or was that taken out of context? Or how do you feel about sixty units on two acres as proposed and how that affects everyone else's numbers of units that they can get in that mixed use zones that are theorized throughout the west side?
So we've, we've looked at it either way and either way works for us. So we didn't wanna make that part of any of decision making, so whatever you decide, we can deal with both.
So you, you're telling me you don't feel like it's robbing sewer capacity from other parts of the west side for this one? Just because they're the first one to the finish line?
No.
Or to the starting gate, I should say?
We're, we're okay with, with either, any of the densities that you decide. Answer your question.
Yeah, thank you. I'm still stuck on the density, but without the infrastructure limitations, maybe I'm less stuck on the density. I do worry, I always worry about precedent. And this has been a really big thing and it's been a guiding document and a guiding force behind a lot of the recent decisions on the west side. And so I'm really, really hesitant to make exceptions, even good ones. I just, I feel like that's a very, that's very dangerous. But maybe we're all just where we are and we wanna make a motion and send it on to somebody else to talk about it. I feel like we're kind of at the place now where we're just a sounding board for this and we're just gonna get weary. Commissioners, what do you wanna do?
I, I, I don't wanna read too much into what the comments have been, but it, it sounds like whether it's a motion to approve or to motion to deny it, it, it might be a split vote, three, three.
But we've learned from experience that we can still pass a split vote on to the City Council.
Right, so uh,
We don't need to decide, we're just making a recommendation. Although we do need to decide on number four. Yes, we have to vote on them separately.
I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion um, to recommend approval on item number four. Steve Turley requests concept plan approval for a mixed use development with apartments and commercial use in a proposed MU zone over two acres of land located at twenty seventy-five West Center Street, Provo Bay Neighborhood.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez to a, approve item number four as written. Do we have a second?
All second.
We have a second by Mr. Whitlock. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, Mr. Whitlock?
I actually have one just question, just to make sure I understand. So if, if we were to approve the concept plan, but the zone doesn't happen, then it's basically null, right? If the, if the City Council doesn't approve this on change, it's
It's, it's dependent on number five.
Yes, okay, makes sense.
Okay, we're ready to vote.
Aye.
This is a vote in favor or opposed to approving the concept plan?
Nay.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Knutson?
Nay.
Mr. South?
Aye.
And I will vote nay. And if anyone wants a finding on that, my reasoning is that I'm okay with the physical scale, but not the density. So I don't know how that gets passed along when it's a tie vote. Yeah, and we're not making a recommendation, so do we?
It'll be noted in the report of action.
But we're, this is an administrative decision.
Right.
So does it get approved because it's a tie?
Has to be the zone change first.
Right. So, so by default, it gets denied.
Okay. Last time we had a tie, I was told it passed on to the City Council as Right, but we found out that was a mistake. So same thing here, this will actually be a denial?
Yes, if you, when you act as an administrative body, you'll improve, when you have that two or votes.
And we don't need to vote again till we come up with it, it just falls. Okay, thank you, I just wanna make sure that we were doing that correctly. Okay, item number five, do we have a motion? Or do we not vote on item number five since item number four? Huh? Okay. This is the zone change request.
I'll make a motion uh, that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve a zone change. Item number five, Stephen Turley requests a zone change from the R one eight zone to the MU zone for approximately two acres of land located at twenty seventy-five West Center Street, Provo Bay Neighborhood.
Okay. Do we have a second?
All second.
Second by Mr. Whitlock, motion made by Mr. Gonzalez. Do we have any discussion on that?
I would support what the staff suggested as the one acre.
Me too, that your motion is for the two acres as written, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Alright, let's vote, Mr. Whitlock. This is a vote yea or nay that you would like to forward a positive recommendation for the zone change request.
Aye.
Nay.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
I will also vote nay. So that will go on to the municipal council, but as a, a split vote. Okay, thank you. It is eight forty-three. Mr. Gagin, you made it. Okay. We are going to address item number six. Nathan Rory Gagin requests a conditional use permit for a dance hall located at two forty-seven West Center Street in the general downtown DT one zone. This is the downtown neighborhood. Mr. Ardmore, the man of the hour, will present this project to us.
Okay, so uh, this is a hearing for a conditional use permit uh, for a dance hall. Uh, but part of that is a TDM request. So uh, let me go through the, a couple of things here. There was a lot of information in your staff report, but there's also been updates since that staff report was written. Uh, so let me be clear, uh, the property here, two forty-seven West Center Street uh, on the map in front of you uh, is, is applying for a dance hall condition use permit. Uh, they were somewhat directed on a separate application for a text amendment uh, for a, a parking change, directed to, to come back with a TDM through their, their condition use permit. So that's what they've done. Uh, they've provided the, the transportation demand management uh, justification for you, and that's in your staff report. Uh, the findings are mostly on available public parking, free public parking uh, within proximity of the building. Um, staff's comfortable with that justification and would recommend approving that TDM. Uh, the other conditions, uh, the first one is the same from your staff report. Uh, the proposed condition that the fire protection uh, be completed uh, prior to occupancy of the building. Uh, that one stays the same. The second uh, recommended condition in your staff report was regarding bathroom facility requirements uh, noted in the staff report. That has since changed. Uh, our commercial building uh, reviewer, uh, building inspector has done a walkthrough in the building uh, last week. And he indicated that based on occupancy standards by the International Building Code, that he'd be comfortable with the amount of bathrooms uh, in the building existing. And that all he would need to sign off on the business license and the condition use permit is an electrical permit. Uh, that electrical permit has been issued. Uh, there are pending inspections with that uh, before that uh, that permit is, is completed and a certificate of occupancy from building would be granted. Um, so that's, that's in the works. Uh, the, a portion of that, oh, so I've covered number three, that the A portion of that, uh, so I've covered number three, that the proposed TDM is approved. The, the portion, um, from the walkthrough with the building inspector is also a, a new condition in number four. That's changed from your staff report. Your staff report indicated a maximum occupancy of ninety-nine persons. Given the earlier condition of the fire protection being completed. Uh, the occupancy would be a maximum of two hundred fifty persons in the building. And two hundred eight persons in the concert hall. Uh, and that was from, again, the, the building inspector doing the walkthrough. So if the earlier conditions are satisfied, then, uh, that occupancy can be obtained. Uh, so, but that would be the maximum, uh, that they could get. Then, uh, the remaining two conditions, five and six, are the same as noted in the staff report. Uh, that one private security guard be on duty during dance hall functions. I think through earlier item, we understand maybe why that is a proposed condition, hopefully. Um, so we don't have repeated issues. Um, and then the standard conditions of, of dance halls in the code, uh, would, would apply to this use as well. Uh, but if those conditions were agreed to, uh, by the applicant, by the planning commission, staff would support. Uh, approval of this condition use permit and the, uh, the TDM, uh, program. That's all I have.
I have a question about, um, page four of the staff report, applicable zoning codes, three B. I'm wondering if this section is relevant to what we're talking about, or if it's just language that's in there because it's part of the section. That you can only have one dance per time of the year, like. That obviously wouldn't be relevant to this, or if it is, that's a problem.
Right, that, that is not relevant to this. Um, that is. No, um. I think that's indicating when. It's not in a downtown area, I believe. Let me do a check on that.
Okay.
While you have a few more discussion, I'll come back.
Cause otherwise he's gonna have very sparse dances.
Right, let me, let me verify some things.
And then there was another one on the next page, um, section VIIB. It says subsection three C VII of this section shall not apply to any one family attached dwelling unit located in a commercial building where a dance hall is located. Are there any residences in this building?
There are none.
Okay, so that doesn't apply either. One last, um, procedural question. On the page six, there's an applicant agreement section and it's not signed. Does that mean the applicant doesn't agree and that's why we're having a hearing, or is that just?
That, that comes in the hearing. Um, so if the planning commission has the same proposed conditions, if they agree with the staff's proposed conditions. They would have to confirm that the applicant agrees to those and then we have them sign this and we can record it.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Ardmore? Alright, thank you. Mr. Gagin?
We don't have, we don't have any problems with any of that. Um, just to let you know, I had the same question about the one dance every season or whatever. And what I was told is that there's some weird language in there about, and I was told it has to do with state events. So apparently like maybe you all could only come party with us once a season or something. Uh, have like some kind of formal city event, that's what I was told. Cause I had the same concern when I read that, so I don't know if that helps.
Mr. Pepperoni has a very sad looking face right now, cause he can only go dancing with you every couple of months now.
That is this.
See, now he's happy, cause maybe he can, okay.
But yeah, we have no issues with any of those conditions.
Okay, awesome. I would like to know how we, we just have the, the ability to, to grant this. Because the, we can say, yeah, it's close enough to parking. Okay. I feel like we've heard this a lot, so let's open it up for public comment and, um, move forward. Neighborhood Chair or District Representative? Okay, do we have anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this proposal? Alright, Commissioners? Ms. Kendall?
I'll make a motion.
Oh my goodness, she's ready.
Ready. I make a motion that we, uh, approve. Nathan Gagin requesting a conditional use permit for a dance hall located at two forty-seven West Center Street in the general downtown zone. With the following conditions. That the fire protection requirement noted in this report be completed prior to occupancy, that the proposed TDM is approved by the planning commission. That the occupation be limited to two hundred and fifty persons per building, uh, and two hundred and eight in the concert hall. Once the fire and building requirements are met, that one private security guard be on duty during dance hall functions. And then all of their standard conditions of section fourteen point three, four point two, five zero, three of the Provo City code shall apply.
I think we missed one. Um, number two was modified to say that the building permit requirements be met. And that the electrical permit be issued.
Okay, I thought all of that.
Yeah, I thought it was two, but then I saw that they had just modified it on here. Is that correct? Okay, um, we have a motion to approve item number six, a conditional use permit. With the, um, six staff recommendations that were listed on the screen. Do we have a second?
All second.
Mr. Knutson has seconded the motion. Ms. Kendall was the one who made the motion. Any comments or any discussion on the motion? Okay, let's start with Mr. Whitlock.
Aye.
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 I will also vote aye. So item number six, six votes of approval for the conditional use permit with the listed. Conditions that staff recommended. Thank you. This was another example of the system working well, where we wanted something to work and everybody worked together to find a solution. So good job. Okay, guess what? It's eight fifty-three, so we can start the next one. Are you jumping before I even read it?
I wanted to get in before nine.
Okay, okay, okay. Alright, we have items seven, eight, and nine that are all the, um, the same project, same applicant. So I will read all three of them in. Um, item number seven. Ryan Salmon requests concept plan approval for a twelve-unit apartment building in a proposed high-density residential zone located at twenty fifty North Canyon Road. In the Pleasant View neighborhood. This is administrative, so the planning commission will be making a decision on this tonight. Item number eight, Ryan Salmon is requesting a zone map amendment from the general commercial and two-family residential zones. To the high-density residential zone in order to build a new twelve-unit apartment building located at twenty fifty North Canyon Road in the Pleasant View neighborhood. Item number nine is also legislative, so we will just be recommending eight and nine to, um, the city council to make a final decision. Item number nine, Ryan Salmon is requesting a general plan map amendment from a commercial designation to residential designation. In association with a zone change request and concept plan for a twelve-unit apartment building in a proposed high-density residential zone. Located at twenty fifty North Canyon Road in the Pleasant View neighborhood. Mr. Ardmore?
Thank you so much. Alright, um, due to the time, I'll try not to repeat a lot of stuff in the staff report. I just wanna point out, um, some, some important facts. So, uh, the property there, I think one major thing to start off with is the applicant initially made an application for a three-story. Fifteen-unit apartment building on this corner. Um, he went to the neighborhood with that first. Uh, received some concerns with the height, the density, the parking, and associated adverse impacts of those things. Um, so he proactively reduced it to what we have now as twelve units on two stories. Uh, he's overparked it, twenty-one parking where the requirement is eighteen. Uh, the elevations you could see respect the residential zones around it. Uh, the residential zones around it would allow building height up to thirty-five feet. Uh, he's proposing to hold himself to thirty feet through a development agreement. As he is, uh, would proffer to hold himself to the parking and the, the unit count in a development agreement. Uh, I think those are important to note because that shows a, a willingness to work with the neighborhood. Uh, and not try to get the most you can out of a property, uh, but to, to find something that, that fits in with the neighborhood and that the. Uh, the neighborhood would, would be happy with and that, that staff would support as well. Um, so regarding the, the concept plan, we're comfortable with that. Uh, being part of a development agreement with the rezone. The rezone itself. Uh, from, from two different zones, from a commercial zone and, uh, uh, old, uh, R two PD zone, uh, to HDR. Would typically trigger alarms, uh, but it's important to note that the HDR is being requested just because it has. A reduced setback where if you ask for LDR or MDR zone, that could possibly fit the prod, project. Those setbacks from the street are gonna be twenty feet, uh, because of the, the tightness of the site. Uh, the HDR setbacks of a minimum ten feet, maximum twenty feet, help this product, this project move forward. Uh, so tying all those other things that could be expanded in the HDR zone, tying those down to. Uh, LDR or MDR standard and just using the setbacks from the HDR. Uh, helps staff feel comfortable with, with the specific zone request. And as far as the general plan change, uh, you've heard us stand up here and say, we don't wanna give up commercial property. Uh, still true, uh, even, even so in Joaquin neighborhood where there's commercial property within the neighborhood. We like neighborhood commercial property. This specific example, if you're familiar with it, has gone through a lot of uses over the past. Just the past decade since I've been here, uh, hasn't been really an attractive. Amenity for the neighbors, uh, hasn't been, uh, a reliable, um. Amenity to the neighborhood. It's not something, the, the uses that I've been in there aren't uses that the neighbors can walk to and, and go pick up something. And use the services. It's, it's been a, a string of, of different trials that, that seem to have, none of them worked. Um, so in that case, in this case, I think the benefit of. Having the property improved and getting a different residential type in the neighborhood and providing more residences overall in City of Provo. Outweigh the loss of this, this small commercial piece. Um, so we're recommending approval on the general plan, on the rezone. And the concept plan, uh, subject to the, the development agreement. And that's all I have prepared.
Any questions for Mr. Ardmore? I have some questions.
Yeah.
I know that's a surprise. Um, so the devi- the development agreement that's being spoken of is to hold it to the HDR. To the density that's being proposed.
Yes, hold it to the twelve, so what he's proffered so far is, um, hold it to twelve units, no more than twelve units, no more than thirty feet in height. And, uh, providing at least twenty-one parking stalls. So that would be run with the.
Is there anything else that would change if this was medium-density residential instead of high-density residential, besides the setbacks?
Not really. He's, he's addressed all the, the, kind of the big differences between the two zones. Um, the, yeah.
Cause what I was wondering, just cause I'm always worried about precedence and especially a big jump in density like this. I don't want someone else to say, well, I'll promise, da, 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 can I have high-density residential so that I don't? Would it be safer to zone, rezone it medium-density residential and then, um, grant a variance for the setback?
Um, that is an option. Uh, that's, I, I don't know if we've talked a lot about that option. Um, where the zone code does allow the director to adjust setbacks. Um, in the multi-family zones. I, I guess, I suppose that would be an, uh, alternative option to, to move forward with.
Okay, I just, I look at the map and it's mostly surrounded by single-family. Even though there's, there's pockets and there's the R two PD to the north, but it feels like a huge jump. Ms. Kendall had a comment or a question?
Well, that's what I wondered too, cause let's say it burns down and the owner sells the property, then it's now zoned HDR.
But the development agreement is tied to the title.
Okay, so not, so it couldn't, somebody couldn't just then put up a big.
Right, right.
They'd have to rebuild to the development agreement.
Yes, or else ask the council to amend the development agreement, come back and, and ask them to amend it.
Okay, I have some comments on that, but they're not questions for you, so thank you. Alright, Mr. Salmon, unless that's not how you say your name?
That's perfect.
Okay, welcome.
Just like the fish. Um, thank you, and I think Aaron made a lot of the arguments that I had planned to. And so out of the interest of time, I'll, I'll address, you know, some of the other things. Um, but I, I appreciate Aaron. I've worked with him the last six months or so and he's helped me learn this process and helped me iterate. Um, and, and to get here standing in front of you. I live in Provo. I attended elementary school in Provo. Dixon Middle School, Provo High School, BYU for my undergrad and BYU from MBA. I love Provo. Uh, my wife is very much the same. We have five kids who are in the Provo School District. We're not out-of-city, uh, real estate investors or professional developers by any means. Um, my background isn't construction management, so, uh, a project like this is exciting to me from that element. But w- we sincerely want to develop something that contributes to the community, contributes to the neighborhood. I wanna stay in Provo for a long time and I hope that my kids can, but right now I think it's impossible in terms of them finding a starter home. In the price range that we think that these will be in. Now, I know that this isn't gonna solve that affordability for the entire city. But I think that developments like this help us move in the right direction for that, the creativity, um, that I think we're, we're looking at. I worked for one of the largest employers in Provo and I saw many of my coworkers earning a professional wage, buying homes in Springville and Spanish Fork. And Lehigh. And then a few years ago, go back to school and get my MBA and I see classmates getting job offers at Qualtrics and other, and Amazon. But the ability to work remote and they're buying homes now in Santaquin and, and Eagle Mountain. We just, we don't have anything for this working class. Um, young professionals wanting to start out and I, that's, that's what we're trying to address here. Um, I wanna be very clear that I, I don't intend for these to be student housing units, not, not, you know, a large rental that I plan to, to rent out. I intend to sell these as individually titled, um, condos. Um, and I'll get into that just a little bit, but, um, I think that the floor plan that we, we proposed. And some ideas that we have with an HOA would encourage owner occupancy, rather than, again, turning these into, to rentals. And that's, that's our hope. Again, I think that contributes to the neighborhood and the, the long-term impact to the immediately surrounding neighborhood. Um, I'll, I'll address the, the commercial to residential. I mean, so there's two amendment, uh, requests that I'm making. You can see on this, on this image here, um, it's, it's a commercial island. Small island of a quarter acre night. And Aaron talked about how this has been a bit of a revolving door of businesses that, um. Maybe it's unfair to say they've been unsuccessful. I don't know their past, but for one reason or another, there hasn't been staying power with these businesses. It's just one after another. And that might be because it's not in a commercial district where you've got the hair salon next to the restaurant. Next to the movie theater, next to, you know, whatever. This is just a really hard, isolated place for a business to thrive and succeed long-term. And that's what we've seen historically. So I think it makes sense to move this to residential. Um, Aaron talked a lot about why we, uh, requested high density. Um, and, and, um, Lisa or, or Ms. Jensen, you make the, the great point of, well, why not medium density? And then ask for a, a setback, which I, I actually did pro, uh, propose to, to the staff. And they said it, they thought it would be better to go this route of proposing high density and then using a developer agreement to, to cap some of those designs. But I'm, I'm somewhat indifferent to either approach. I'm just, just for that record. We did have a neighborhood meeting, uh, last fall. I incorporated a lot of that feedback here. Um, and then just lastly, I received an email last night from the, the neighborhood chair from last year, and I understand there's some changes. And so it's, uh, I think we have a different neighborhood chair, but, um, and I, I know that he's here and he may want to speak. So I won't speak for him, but I, my interpretation of the email is, is favorable from at least his viewpoint. And I don't know who he's, you know, talked with, uh, uh, in the neighborhood to, to compile this email. But he has, uh, asked a handful of questions that I'll just address quickly here so that they're on the record. Um, will the existing power lines remain or be buried? My hope is that we can bury them. I don't know what the, the cost of that would be or how feasible with Provo City. That's something that obviously we'd need to explore. Um, another question is, I'd like to know, what is in store? Um, another question is, I'd like to know what is in store for the property line. That east property line, there's a fence right there between our property and that building. Again, my intent is to to keep that fence there. We hope that it can stay through construction and if not, replace it with another fence. Um, that same owner asks about planting trees. So you can see those triangular um, kind of, you know, lands, yeah, exactly. Um, so that's that's a requirement from the city and we would be planting trees to achieve the required um, parking shade ordinance or however you want to word that. So yes, there would be trees there. Um, another question is, what will the light situation be in the parking lot? And I'll just, I'll read straight from the city code here. Parking lots should be illuminated adequately for security and safety. But such illumination shall be controlled to prevent glare and avoid decreasing the visibility of neighboring properties. Lighting fixtures shall be shielded where necessary to prevent direct illumination. I don't have a, you know, a a lighting study done of how bright it's going to be, but of course, we intend, I think that fence, I think the trees will help to to block any light pollution going into the the neighboring yard. But at the same time, we want to make sure this parking lot is is safe for the residents to park at night. Um, and uh, another question was, uh, I I'm not a fan of the the color scheme and let's see, is that not working now? Where am I pointing this? So I I did graduate from B Y U. Um, I don't actually love blue this much though. This is a little bit more of a placeholder. Um, we we admittedly haven't spent a ton of time on the elevation, but it gives us a feel for for what we would be going for. Uh, but I think it will be a little bit more, you know, acceptable and fitting into this, to the surrounding buildings there. And so I'm in agreement with that neighbor there. I, yes. Um, will these units be leased or for sale? As I mentioned, we intend for these to be for sale. And and I hope that the cost of construction and whatnot would allow these to be under the three hundred thousand dollar price point, which does not exist in the city right now. Um, when will a draft of the proffered development agreement be available? I've already sent that to the 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 planning staff, so they have that. And then what signage uh, is proposed for the apartments? Very, very minimal. I know there's a development just to the south of us, temp towers that has, you know, a large sign that's visible. They're renting their unit, so I think that's important to them and their facade. We wouldn't be, and so, you know, large signage just doesn't really matter or make sense in this development. And I think I think that's it. I appreciate, I appreciate your time and being able to to be a part of this community legislative process.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant commissioners? Mr. Whitlock?
Uh, I, just for my point of clarity, uh, it's both, this will be built on both the the commercial building there that has like pre-loved and then the house, just.
Yeah, so there are two parcels right now, and that's why the site plan is is showing that property line in between. They would be merged into a single. That I'm, so that the top parcel is currently commercial, the bottom is residential, and then I'd be requesting that they both be zoned as as H D R.
And and sorry, I have a hand on the off way. Are there any amenities um, currently planned? I I see there's like a little bit of a backyard in that triangle angle, but.
Yeah, I mean, mainly the green space. We we have played with, so this, is there a laser pointer on this too? Oh, so I don't know if you can see. Okay, so there's kind of this open area. There would be covered bike parking, but we've, I've played with the architects of maybe have having that be a gym or something like that. Um, you know, but then of course you lose the the covered bike parking, so uh, nothing definite right now, but again, I I I look at this as a as a concept plan where I've made my best attempt to show what we hope to build. But I I I hope to work with the architects to see if we can't improve on this. Keeping in mind that we have the developer agreement limiting us to the height, limiting us to a unit density and making sure that we're meeting the parking standards as well.
And then what was the thinking um, on the overparking?
Um, so one of the big concerns at the neighborhood meeting was there's an existing parking problem. Um, what's happening is there's a student housing unit to the south of this and they charge their residents for parking. And so you can imagine a college student who's paying tuition, textbooks, everything else to then say, you know, another forty bucks a month for parking. So they don't, they don't pay for parking, they come park on this street. And so rightly rightly so, the neighbors are concerned about another development contributing to that problem. I think because these would be sold as condos and um, you know, the the hope is that these would be attractive and marketed to young working professionals. I I don't think that parking, I don't, I certainly don't think we would be contributing to that existing parking problem. Um, admittedly, we're not solving it, but I hope that you're not asking me to solve a parking problem. Um, but that's why we, I I felt like, okay, this is a real concern for the neighbors. I want to make my best attempt to to maximize the parking.
You mentioned that you were going to talk a little bit more about what you're planning to to get these to be owner occupied. I I, by the way, I love that these are going to be for sale. It's great.
Um, so so I I've, I'm not an attorney, but I've I've done some research, spoke to attorneys about drafting an H O A there where there's a required minimum owner occupancy for the entire complex. And so those owners who would wish to rent theirs out would have to apply to the H O A and it would only be, you know, say, you know, twenty-five percent of these could ever be rented out at any time. So now you have owners buying these and owners living in these and owners staying and contributing to the neighborhood. And that's that's what I I hope is that we can move in that direction. I think the floor plan being uh, a single bedroom also makes it less attractive to try to rent these to singles. Because I don't know too many singles that want to, you know, bunk up and share a bedroom and if you can only fit two, then I don't know that the economics work, so. Um, again, our hope is that these would be positioned that they're attractive to working professionals wishing to stay. Yeah.
Something else that has been found to be helpful on this issue nationally is that if they put into the C C N Rs that when it changes ownership, the person who buys it has to live in it for the first year or two years. That discourages the large national companies that buy these up and rent them out from ever buying one in the first place. So that should be a pretty innocuous requirement in your H O A if if you're striving for that ownership and and the city would see that as helpful.
Is that something that would have to be proffered in a development agreement or is that just a?
Well, he's already going to do C C N Rs. We would just ask him to include that in a C C N Rs and we'll just.
You would just guide him. We don't need to say that in anything we do today. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any neighborhood um, chairs or district neighborhood chairs that would like to come address? Okay, we received one letter on this item from Paul Evans and I think you already referred to it, but it was a summary of lots of different neighborhood concerns and you've gone through and answered them. That was fantastic. But if there are any anyone other things that haven't been mentioned, any other neighbors that want to speak to this, you've got two minutes each.
Name is Paul Evans and since I didn't say it in the letter, I'll just say it now, and that is, this is a really great opportunity for the city to show how higher density housing can integrate into existing single-family neighborhoods. And uh, and the Salmon family and Ryan has been stellar in working to make that happen and to address those issues. So um, uh, you know, the the concerns about H D R and M D R and development agreements are somewhat assuaged by your um, unanimous vote not to change a development agreement for the Legacy Village. Um, uh, uh, elderly housing area uh, a few weeks ago, so that helps to confirm that development agreements have some longstanding uh, possibility for for assurance uh, to neighbors. So uh, but there may be some other options uh, to actually allow for M D R. And uh, and still have the setbacks and and those should be considered by the uh, planning commission and staff and and uh, those may come up later. So anyway, um, there's no reason why you shouldn't approve this. This is a a really great uh, project and it'll be great to see what happens.
Thank you. Tell us your name and where you live.
Um, my name is Lily Mott. I am a Provo resident. I actually live, like I share a property line with um, the Salmon property to the east. Um, I clearly was unaware that we were this far down on the agenda, so I'll be free. Um, I will speak quickly just generally and then I'll speak personally and individually because we do share that line. Um, in general, as I've talked with neighbors and um, other members of the community, I think that there is a little bit of heightened anxiety with the river's edge that's coming in with like over four hundred units. Um, and to hear, it is a little alarming, I think, when we see the H D R um, designation right there among all the single-family homes. Um, I do live in a townhome. It's the middle unit of um, the building just to the east of the property. Um, and so our, the only windows really, pretty much all the windows in our house face this property, so we're grateful for um, Mr. Salmon and for his willingness to work with the community. Um, but personally, we're just a little bit concerned about um, again, some of those questions were mine, I think, like the light pollution and visibility, being able to look into windows and things like that. Um, but it seems like these things will be overcome um, with the development agreement. Um, I would, I I hope that we can move toward the the um, medium as opposed to the high density. Um, yeah, I, the the area just feels a little bit saturated with the renovation of the North Canyon condominiums and with um, the newer tent towers um, development down south of us. It just seems to be encroaching quite a bit. So the the zoning is a concern, I think, for the area and for the residents of the area. Um, but yeah, thank you for addressing our concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing and um, commissioners. How do you feel? Mr. Ardmore would like to share.
If I may. Um, so just to confirm with you earlier, I stated about the M D R option, uh, in that code, it gives the director, Bill, uh, discretion to adjust setbacks. He's confirmed that we we would be able to adjust the setbacks as shown on the concept plan. Um, all the same things would be in a development agreement.
But it would say M D R instead of H D R.
Zone would be used rather than the H D R, if that gives comfort to to you and the residents.
Thank you. That's good news. Okay. Let me start off with all the great things I love about this. I love the way that it meets the general plan goals. The promote small-scale infill development across the city, um, improve the aesthetic and use of uh, otherwise underutilized properties, promote neighborhood scale development, a mix of density. Um, I love, I love that. I I like that it faces the street, that the facade, it's a street-friendly facade, even though they're probably entering from the backside. Um, I like that he's trying to make them owner occupied and doing things to encourage more of a neighborhood feel. Um, there were questions about landscaping. I think those specifics come at the project plan phase, so we don't really need to overthink those. And I love that M D R is a, a very real reality here, so. What other things are you guys thinking about this requests?
Oh, I'm just really glad of your commitment to make those owner occupied, um, without us requesting them. We've, we've done that before, uh, I think, and and it's nice to have a developer bring that right at the forefront.
We have to remember, that's not a guarantee, but he's going to try as hard as it sounds like. Um, I had a couple of questions about the site plan that I should probably ask you. Mr. Salmon, um, I'm concerned that a garbage truck cannot actually make the turn that is written on here. I'm imagining um, that you have a handicap van parked in that um, southern handicap spot with the tree bulb out, making it so it can't really pull all the way in, and then your um, garbage truck has to make a, a, has to take off the back of the van in order to actually get in.
So that's, w- w- we've played with this one a little bit. Originally, we had the dumpster up on the top, but you know, you've got the property line there. Um, it it's a challenge. We're trying to maximize parking. I don't want to, you, we do have extra parking spaces, so you know, we could get rid of that that parking space just above it and rotate the the dumpster even more. So it's kind of that balance of you know, wh- what's going to work? How can we maximize parking? And obviously, we need to make sure that a truck can get in there. Um, I I hesitate to say this, but I've I've talked with the the neighbor to the south and he has some future development plans and we've played with the idea of actually moving the dumpster down and accessing through a shared, shared street there. It's it's creative. I like it. Um, I don't know how realistic that is, but.
Just wanted to make sure that we, before we chair, that there's enough parking spaces, that we have taken all the measurements into account. And then um, maybe this is a Mr. Day question, but is one egress ingress okay for this many units? He's given me the thumbs up. Okay, those are the two site plan questions that I had. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, are we ready to make a motion, starting with item number seven? Raise your hand if you want to be the one. Mr. South, please raise your hand. I read your mind.
I'll make the motion. Um, I recommend that the planning commission approve this concept plan for Ryan Salmon, requests uh, his concept plan approval for a twelve-unit apartment building and a proposed M D R zone located at twenty fifty North Canyon Road.
Is that okay for us to change that language? Okay, M D R zone. We have a motion by Mr. South to approve item seven as written with the um, substitution of medium-density residential instead of high-density residential. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Knutson has seconded the motion. Do we have any discussion on the motion as stated? All right, then we'll start with Mr. Whitlock for a vote.
Aye.
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 I will also vote aye. So six of us in favor of approving the concept plan in a proposed M D R zone. All right, item number eight, obviously, we would, a motion would need to state whether you're approving high-density or medium-density residential for this as well. And we're just forwarding a recommendation for the municipal council on this request. Do you have a motion? Mr. Knutson.
Motion. We send a, make the motion, we send a positive recommendation to the leg- to the municipal council for item number eight. Ryan Salmon is requesting a zone map amendment from the C G, general commercial and R two D P two family residential zone to the M D R medium-density residential zone in order to build a new twelve-unit apartment building located at twenty fifty North Canyon Road, Pleasant View neighborhood.
Okay. Um, I would add to that, that the staff has recommended that we state that that's subject to the approval of a development agreement. Is that okay with your motion?
Yes.
Okay, so item number eight as written with the substitution of medium-density residential in place of high-density residential and all of that subject to the approval of the development agreement. Okay, do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Whitlock has seconded it. Um, do we have any discussion? Okay, Mr. Whitlock.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And I will also vote aye. So all six of us are sending a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item number eight. Um, requesting a zone map amendment to the M D R zone, subject to the approval of a development agreement. And item number nine, we didn't talk a whole lot about this. Are we comfortable with changing the general plan map amendment? Uh, changing the general plan?
Can I ask a question of Mr. Ardmore on this one? Um, uh, we'd, you had mentioned that we like to see, or you like to see uh, commercial zoning in residential areas, and I agree. Uh, is there a threshold where that becomes um, unrealistic or or unproductive? Like, we know this is a spot, it's a small spot. Like, do we have any information about that?
I think it depends a lot on two things, the neighborhood characteristics. And the use that goes into that, that commercial structure. Uh, you've seen it succeed with the Bicycle Collective in the Waukees neighborhood. Um, or even uh, the Hut. Yeah. In the, in the Waukees neighborhood, much different. Very close in proximity um, to this area, but much different kind of feel demographic. Um. We, we would like to see it also in the Franklin neighborhood, but again, uh, there's, there's been the zoning there, but the demographic. The, the demand hasn't been there. So uh, as much as we'd like to see it, it, it's a market. It's a market reality, uh, that is, this might not be the best place for it.
Does it really matter if the general plan says commercial there? I mean. We really can't put medium density residential if the general plan says they want commercial. Is the general plan amendment a good housekeeping thing to do or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, it wouldn't be against. Policies to, to not change it, but it's not advisable.
It's not advisable.
It's not clean.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, my thoughts are that the, the, the law, um, the combined law of, it's like, what, point? Point seven five or something, it's.
It's not big enough.
It's not big enough to have a really vibrant business and, and just the business, the businesses that have been there. Um. No, they, they exist.
Yeah.
But not maybe the.
They're not serving the community either. They're just kind of an outlier. I also was wondering if, because there's. Commercial within a relatively close area that, that's not a real good neighborhood commercial spot because. You can go a block away and get everything you need.
Right.
So, anyway. Okay, any more discussion on item number nine? Are we ready for a motion?
I'll move, uh. I move to recommend um. Approval of the general plan amendment from commercial to residential, uh, item number nine. Ryan Salmon is requesting general plan map amendment from a commercial designation residential designation association with a zone change request. And concept plan for a twelve unit apartment building. In a proposed M D R residential zone. Uh, located at twenty fifty North Canyon Road Pleasant View neighborhood.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Gonzalez to forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item number nine as written. With the change of a proposed M D R zone instead of H D R zone. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Whoa, I think Mr. South leaned forward faster than you, so I'm going to give it to him. Mr. South has seconded the motion. And any discussion? Okay, Mr. Whitlock.
Aye.
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 I will also vote aye. We have six votes in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation for item number nine with those changes as noted. I feel like we need a, a big round of applause for us tonight. Item number ten, um, we're just going to, do we need to? Vote to continue it or it just automatically gets continued because we ran out of time? Okay, so item number ten will be on our next meeting's agenda. Um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.